There's a certain date for them better.
Are we ready? Okay. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to our August 17th Board of Supervisors meeting. This time we'll call them in order. Ms. Slade, would you pray a worship, please?
Father, we pause, acknowledging and thanking you for your presence here with us today. Father, at this time, we need your power, your presence, the peace that you provide us. I pray, Father, that you could give us a subtle countenance this morning. Father, that these gentlemen would, in a very real way, would know and appreciate the fact that you were with us, that you never forsake us. Father, that you would open their minds to see the possibilities that can be brought to bear here in Rankin County. Father, that you would help them to understand what's in the best interest of all citizens. Father, that today, we would acknowledge that we need your help. And, Father, we're counting on you to provide us with everything that we need today to make these decisions. I pray, Father, that you would give guidance to the men and women who are protecting us, that you would give protection to them. Father, that they would know that beyond a shadow of a doubt that you're protecting them. Father, we pray that you would bless them for all of the service that they've rendered to us in Christ's name again.
Amen. Thank you, Craig. For a public comment, we have Mr. David Caulfield. Is this working outside?
She's good.
Okay. All right. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is David Caulfield. I work for the Mississippi State Department of Health, and I'm here today to have some discussion with the board about a grant that we recently received for the Health Department. In the next spring, all of our food centers across the state of Mississippi are going to be closed for WIC, to issue out WIC substances. And because what's happening is, as the food centers close, people will go to the grocery stores and pick up their WIC. And because of that, we have some staff that are located in the WIC facility that needs to move back to the local Health Department. However, we don't have space in the local Health Department to do that. So what we've done is applied for a grant and have been awarded their grant through the federal WIC program to do some renovations in the building. It's not increasing any of the square footage, it's just taking some space and reorganizing, building a few walls, and taking down a few walls to just make it function better. And so I wanted to bring that to your attention today and give you the information about what is about the grant, so it just completely outlines everything if I can.
Sure. Just so everybody's clear, I think he's talking about the Health Department imperal.
Correct.
Okay.
This is a proposal. Like I said, it has been submitted and has been approved. What we're trying to do now is just take the next step forward. Because we are a state agency, what we would have to do is sub-grant the grant that we received, and that's where we'd like to talk to the board about sub-granting with the board, releasing the money to the board, and then looking to identify a contractor so we can start the process if the board is in agreement with that. Across the state, our WIC staff has always been a part of the Health Department, but in certain areas, there are places that we just don't have the space, and Rankin County was one of those areas. So what we've done is, on all of those locations, we have gotten the grants to, you know, to work and renovate buildings so we could bring staff back into the Health Department. And that's basically what I'm here today to, you know, present to you. It's a $153,000 grant. It's at no cost to the board. The board doesn't have to come up with any money or anything like that. So it's, it's, we'll take care of all the renovations, it'll take care of all the IT requirements and any infrastructure in the building that's required.
So have you already obtained an architect?
We have not. We had an engineer look at what we needed to be done, and it's an engineer that we had used on a previous project just like this over in Hines County. And so he gave us a cost estimate of what we needed to be done according to what we determined had to be done. And so, but it was just a cost estimate. So we would need to bring in, as a part of the contract that would pay for, you know, a contractor to do the official drawings. There are, there are two pieces of, there are two floor plans that are in the proposal. One is of an existing floor plan of the building, and the other is the proposed floor plan. And you can see the difference. It's just adding, taking space, dividing it up differently, rearranging a few walls, and adding more offices into the facility.
There won't be any added on, then?
No, sir. It's not adding on any space to the building, it's doing everything internally. And of course, you know, we, there's always a time factor in things, and we started this process back in January. When COVID hit, they just slowed everything down and prevented us from being able to move as quickly. So now we do have some deadlines to be able to get the funding appropriated, you know, or through the sub-grant, to get the sub-grant processed through Finance and Administration.
What are your timelines?
Well, we do have to have the money encumbered by September 30th, but which means that we...
Next month?
Yes, sir. Which means that's what we got to do is get the sub-grant processed, and once the sub-grant's processed through Finance Administration, then the money is released to the board, and then we start the process of getting the contractor and getting the plans done, you know, to build the building. But the money only has to be encumbered by September 30th.
So that's kind of out of my scope, so.
Yeah. So I want to look at the language of the sub-grant. I assume that our involvement is primarily because we own the building.
Correct.
And so as landlord, we need to agree and approve whatever renovation of our facility is going to occur.
Sure.
Do you know?
Pardon me?
Do you know if this grant obligations, I haven't had a chance to read this, does the grant obligation require us to do anything with respect to the funding other than service pass-through?
That's all it is.
All right. There's no further obligation to account for?
Is it a drawdown, or is it a...
Well, once the funding, what has happened in previous projects that we've done just like this, and we've got four projects going on right now, which Rankin County would be one of the four. So once the money is encumbered, it is in the hands of the Board of Supervisors. And what we do is, we would give probably about 50% upfront on to the contractor for them to start that process, and then about 50% through the project upon review and approval, you know, of the progression of the project, and the other money is released.
And we'd have to be the ones to request it in drawdown?
You would have it. You would have the funding, because it's already would be encumbered by the board.
So it's sounding like it's going to be our baby, basically.
It would be, and usually, I don't know about this one, usually there is a small administrative fee, it's a percentage of what is in here that is allocated for...
That's what I was looking for.
...like us that has to do all the drawdowns.
If we're going to have to handle all the funding, we need to be paid. We need to be reimbursed.
There is, there is that built into the grant proposal.
Not a lot, but usually somewhere there is.
It's about 8%.
Okay.
I think it's 8% of it.
That's a little bit better than half.
Well, my concern is, it doesn't show anywhere about some architectural fees, because, you know, they always have to get involved whenever it's over $50,000, right?
Correct.
Actually, it requires a professional engineer over $50,000. I don't know what the architect trigger is, Jay.
I think it's around 80 or something.
It's probably going to meet the threshold.
So I just didn't want to come up short on the funding, you know, when we had to pay professional fees.
Yeah.
Have y'all, have y'all quantified that?
The professional fees?
Right.
No, so that would be a part of the grant.
Okay.
That's a part built into the renovation costs.
Okay. All right. And so what has to be done for it to be encumbered? We have the board have to accept it, is that it?
Yes, sir. What we would do is, we would get some general information about who would be sort of the team to lead for it, our person of contact, get some, just identifying information from the county, like the tax ID number and the DUNS number, and then we initiate the sub-grant. And that is processed through the Finance and Administration. And so once that is approved, and the grant is complete and, or the grant application, sub-grant application is complete, and we just release the money to the board.
Y'all been working on this since January?
It started in January, yes.
And we're halfway through August?
Yes, sir. You're right, and it...
And you're asking us to jump on, grab, just grab hold?
Well, it is, you know, and the big reason behind that is because, of course, we were dealing with COVID, and our focus with COVID from the Department of Health has been just re-directed to working with COVID. This is an opportunity for the, you know, to be able to do some renovations to the building at no cost, and so it was just an opportunity we didn't want to pass.
So how many employees do you have at the WIC Center?
There will be six individuals that would be coming from the WIC Center into the food facility. And once the food facility's shut down, there are additional staff that work strictly in the food center, and they're on a contract basis, so their contracts will just terminate. But these other individuals...
How many people are going to be coming to the Health Department?
Six.
Six?
Six.
Looks like the engineer's estimate for the actual work is well, well within the grant amount. It, just initial review, without really studying any details, suggests that there will be enough fat in there to cover professional fees.
Okay. There was something that I just want to bring to your attention. On the initial proposal, it was discussing to doing some work on the front facade of the building by adding another entrance into where the WIC services would operate. We backed away from that to where we would not be doing any kind of change to the outside of the building at all.
All right.
And it would show up in that initial proposal, but we backed away from that.
Okay. So there may be some costs that are reflected here that will not be incurred?
Correct.
All right. Does everybody understand? So the grant funds are a statute.
So you won't be wanting to make a double wide entrance, then?
Well, what we're going to do is, because there's a lot of flow that goes into the building because of WIC participants that come in, and so we were just going to make a separate entry for those individuals, and we just have backed away from that. So they would just come through the main entry and just be directed down a certain hallway to get to the area that they need.
All right.
When do we meet again?
September the 3rd.
The 20...
The 3rd is the work session, and the 8th is the board meeting.
Unless you guys recess to talk more about something else, it looks like the 3rd is our next meeting.
So the 3rd, by the 3rd, our attorney have plenty of time to look at all the documents, and we'll be ready to make a decision then. Okay. Can I just leave some business cards? Your case, anyone has a question, they can ask.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
The 30th of September.
Thank you. Thank you, Dave, for coming.
Thank you.
Janice, do we have anyone else sign up for a public comment?
Not a public comment. We've got someone out there for the patient asking for hearing, they're hearing somebody.
All right. We'll move on with our agenda. Old business, do I have most approved minutes?
Move.
Motion by Jared.
Second.
Second by Steve. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Ayes have it. Consent agenda. Have most approved?
Second.
Motion by Daniel, second by Steve. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Ms. Slade?
Morning, gentlemen. Today, we will have a number of protests and property tax assessments. We have a number who have asked for a hearing before the board on their specific assessment. We will start with item A, Lowe's Home Center, this is parcel G10, 6314. Representative is the Altus Group, Larry Cargill. This time, we will open that public hearing. Ms. Janice, I'm not sure exactly how we're going to do this. What's the best way, you think?
Well, as far as I know, less, more, and things change.
We know who's out here for Lowe's.
There's nobody. I think I'm going to double check.
Let's just call Lowe's.
Those, him?
Okay.
How about this? Janice, when you go outside, will you please announce to the room that once everyone comes up, they'll be allotted three minutes at the podium? That way, we don't say it over and over again.
Should I also include the protest for 50,000 or 500%?
Yes. Laura, yours looks so much bigger than why I wear one of them. Yeah, it look like it's falling off you, man. Mine's like pulling my ears. I'm a little like Dumbo over here.
This first guy's got the first three on here. You'll let him do all three while he's here? This guy's got the first three.
Sure, that's right, yeah.
I don't think he's here, though.
I'm just saying, his group, he's got the first three. He can just take his case for all three?
Those are all TIFs. Those are going to be really simple.
Oh, yeah.
They're not allowed to protest. Somebody must have forgotten to tell them that.
Actually, he's got the first four, I guess. A, B, C, three, D.
I found this, and it drops. I don't know. Something turned loose. Just think, just think about it.
Okay. Gentlemen, we've announced to the hall where congregants are allowed to be in our virus days here, and there is no one here on behalf of the Lowe's Home Center at this time. They have submitted documentation. However, this is a tax increment financing situation. Under the TIF documents, they're not authorized to raise a protest to an assessment, and therefore, we will close that public hearing. At this time, it would be appropriate for you to take action. Your action would be to accept the assessor's assessment of value.
So move.
Which items? One, two?
If, I don't want to take them separately, Jay. We're going to have to move through them. We're going to have to open up a hearing on each of them and make sure that it's documented in the record that they all had an opportunity.
So I am number one?
Yes.
Lowe's Home Center.
That's correct.
Jared made a motion, and I second.
All right. Motion by Jared, second by Steve. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
For the record, the action is to accept the assessor's assessment of value. Item B, Coles Department Store, Inc., parcel G10, 6313, represented by Altus, Larry Cargill. We'll open that public hearing. There's no one here to represent Coles on that matter. We'll close the public hearing. This time, it would be appropriate for you to take action, which is to accept the assessor's value.
Make a motion.
Motion by Brad.
Second.
Second by Jared. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Item C, In Like Manner Home Depot, parcel H812, represented by Altus, Larry Cargill. That hearing is open. There's no one here to represent Home Depot USA on that matter. We'll close that public hearing. At this time, it would be appropriate to take action.
Make a motion, September.
Second.
That's fine.
Motion by Jared, second by Steve. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Item D is Kroger Company, parcel H9A-1. This is not a TIF. I have been advised that there's no one here representing Kroger on this matter. That hearing is open. We will close that hearing. At this time, it would be appropriate to take action, accepting the assessor's value.
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Brad, second by Jared. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Item E is the Flowood APLMP LLC, parcel E10H-8, represented by Flanagan Building LLC. That hearing is open. I am advised that there's no one here representing Flowood APLMP LLC. We'll close that public hearing. At this time, it would be appropriate to take action.
Motion, September.
Motion by Steve, second by Jared. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Item F, 1120 Flowood Drive LLC, this is DAQ22 and following. That, represented by Dennis Perkins, I'm advised that there's no one here representing 1120 Flowood Drive LLC. That hearing's open. We'll close that public hearing. At this time, it would be appropriate to take action.
Motion.
Motion by Steve, second by Jared. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Item GM advised that Southwind Richland LLC has accepted the assessor's value. Therefore, there is no need for a hearing. They've withdrawn their objection.
I'll make that motion.
No motion required. Item H, Sohan, Inc., we'll open that hearing, parcel E10K-3-14, Representative O'Connor and Associates, Peter Bach. I'm advised there's no one here representing Sohan, Inc. on that matter. We'll close the public hearing. At this time, it would be appropriate to take action.
Motion, September.
Motion by Jared, second by Steve. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Item I, Home LLC DBA Quality Enns and Suites, parcel G8I-10-20, represented by O'Connor and Associates. I'm advised that there's no one here. That hearing is open. We'll close the public hearing. At this time, it would be appropriate to take action.
Make a motion.
Motion by Brad.
Second.
Second by Jared. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item J is Jerry Gilbert and James Smith on parcel E7I-5. Notice that I slowed down. I'm advised that either Mr. Gilbert or Mr. Smith, or both, are here on this matter, so we will open that public hearing. If you will bear with us, we will allow them to come forward and present whatever documentation or proof required by statute that they wish to present.
Hey, Mr. Slade, let me ask you one, one quick question.
Yes, sir.
Items A through I, just from my knowledge on the record, how did A through I get on the agenda?
The assessment was made.
Okay.
An individual or representative of the entity that was being assessed contacted the tax assessor's office either directly or through written communication. They indicated that they objected to the assessment. They were instructed on how to raise an objection to the assessment, and they were told that today is the hearing for that.
So they asked to be on the agenda?
That's correct.
And none of them showed up?
That's correct. They may have indicated their presence through the submission of the required documentation. They are actually not required to come before you and to, to give further information other than their written submission, but what the board is doing is giving them an opportunity to speak.
To come discuss.
And even if they did submit...
None of the groups showed up.
That's correct. And even if they did submit documentation, the board has now voted to accept the assessor's assessment rather than the documentation that has been provided. And the way that it, practically speaking, Daniel, the way that it works is, if they provide documentation that is satisfactory to the assessor's staff, that would have resulted in additional conversations and communications, and there would have been some, ostensibly some agreed-upon resolution of value on the basis of what they said versus what we said.
Most of the time, we will ask for information, and they may not provide it. So if I ask for information, it's hard for me to...
Right.
Well, I'm in total agreeance with you. If they want to, if they got a discretion about the assessment, then come in and let's talk about it. But what irritates me is they request to be on the agenda. We go through, we set a public hearing, we open it up, and then they don't want to come talk about it.
Oh, yeah.
So I just wanted to be sure that everybody understands that's watching at home, that the reason this stuff's on the agenda is because they asked to talk about it.
Right.
We invited them to come into a public forum and talk about it and discuss it with John in his office.
That's right.
And they didn't show up.
That's correct.
That's what I want to be sure we understand.
That's correct. The vast majority of what was on your Page 1 are going to be representatives from who knows where, Atlanta?
Sure.
Dallas, Memphis. I assume that they did not want to incur the expense of sending an expert down here if they didn't think it was worthwhile. Ms. Janice, is anyone, Mr. Gilbert, okay. We may have assumed wrong on that one, gentlemen. So we will close that public hearing. There's no one here representing Mr. Gilbert, Mr. Smith on E71, I'm sorry, E7I-5. So we will close that public hearing. At this time, it would be appropriate to take action.
Make a motion.
Motion by Brad.
Second.
Second by Steve. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Item K, Safe Store Self-Storage LLC, parcel H11L-1-212, represented by Mr. James Harrell. That public hearing is open. This time, I'll ask if Mr. Harrell is here. I don't believe there's anyone here representing them on that. So we'll close that public hearing. This time, it would be appropriate to take action.
Motion.
Motion by Steve.
Second.
Second by Jared. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Item L, Ms. President, because I believe that the same representative is here for both Walmart and Sam's on the parcels that are reflected there, my intention will be, as soon as I'm confirmed that we do have a representative here, is to take items L and M together with the same representative.
I believe they're going to be, as part of the reading, so they're not going to be able to protest on here.
Okay.
That's in their national court form, so we know that will be...
They get six minutes or three?
That's a great, you know, that's good. Let's give them four and a half.
All right.
Tell you what, Ms. President, since, since we've got two different issues here involving the, even the statutory authority of the objector to raise the objection, let's, let's take these separately. We'll start with item L, which is the Walmart Real Estate Business Trust, parcel D6P-28-60, and G9D-7-10, and H11-30-20. Representatives are Evans, Petrie, PC, Karen Nickel. And so we will open that public hearing. At this time, I'll ask for the representatives of Walmart Real Estate Business Trust to step forward and to present whatever information they wish to present with respect to the objection to the assessment. Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. Good morning. I am Karen Nickel. I'm a member of the Mississippi Bar, and I'm here representing Walmart. I have boxes of appraisal, so I had a copy of an appraisal for each of you. I'm happy to hand those out, or I have a copy of a summary sheet that I thought would be easier for this type of forum. So if I could pass those...
Hey, Janice, will you help the lady out?
I'm sorry.
I don't want to approach normally. I'd just come up to y'all and hand them.
If I may, for the record, if the representatives of Walmart wish to do so, they may leave a copy of the appraisal or anything they want to submit for the record. They need to leave it on this table right here before they leave. We only need one copy.
Okay. I supplied copies to the assessor before, so they have them, they've had them, the board had them. So I would like to, this is John, come on up. This is the appraiser, and since we have a really shortened amount of time, I'll give you a real brief statement. I promise to be short. Walmart looked a while back, when they started selling these stores in the mid-teens, 15, 16, 17, they realized that generally, their properties were valued at twice what they ultimately sell for, and that's the case here, too. And so we hired an appraiser, local, who has appeared, I think he has actually appraised I think he has actually appraised property for y'all before, to come look at the properties. And we do care. We're here. We're not lies. We're actually here, because we want y'all to just look. And if you can see on the right-hand side, the green are the summary of what the appraiser came up with when he did all of his approaches. The tan color are where y'all are set currently. If you will notice, and I'm just going to give you an example, and I'm going to let the appraiser, because that's, I think, who you really want to hear from, not a lawyer, tell you that, for example, the one on Lakeland Drive, there's a Kroger down the street. You've got us assessed at four dollars a square foot for the land. There's a Kroger right down the street that's half the size that's at three fifty-four. So really, we should be below that, and that's actually where the appraiser came in, is at three twenty-five. All I'm asking is for y'all to really look at these, see if you really think that this reflects the fair value of the property and the land, or if we're really including some business value in with that assessment, which is not what we're supposed to do. So I understand y'all are probably not going to come down ever to, to the number where the appraisal is. That's honestly where these properties sell for. I've represented them in lots of different places and in lots of different hearings. And we, every year, go to Walmart World, basically, and get educated on what these really sell for. That's really what they sell for, is in the green, okay? Everywhere. I mean, except for some weird locations where values are incredibly high. That's what they sell for. So I'm asking y'all just to look at it. Walmart would like you guys to take a look at it. I understand you can't come all the way down, but some break, some evening out in the land values would be nice. Looking at the actual improvement values. These are buildings that are at least fifteen years old. I think one of them may be a little bit newer than that. Some of them are twenty years old. And they just have not been depreciated the way it's reflected in the marketplace. So that's all I'm, as a lawyer, going to say. And now I'm going to let John just briefly talk about each property. And if y'all have any questions on here.
Thank you, John Prater. We'll start with Marketplace, the one in Richland. Y'all have it currently valued at eleven point six million roughly. I came in at six point four million. I did the cost sales and the income approach on all four properties. And all of my cost sales and the income all came out to pretty much the same on that property. I valued it at six point four million. After I did these four, I was able to verify one final sale in Jackson that sold, the old Sam's by North Park Mall. I was able to verify that sale, and it sold for twenty-one dollars and sixty-seven cents a foot. And next one, Bass Pro. Bass Pro was valued at thirteen point eight million. I did cost sales and income on it again. I came in at six point three million. The Howie Eighty and Pearl is valued at fifteen point six million. I came in seven point nine million. The Lakeland Drive was at fourteen point one million roughly. I came in at seven point two million. I value these based on what they would sell for, if they were put up for sale today. If Walmart put these stores up for sale and they sold, what could they bring in the marketplace? I value them based on fee simple ownership. Most of these Walmarts are selling to second-gen buyers. I've done a ton of them across the country. You know, they sell anywhere from fifteen dollars a foot to fifty-five, sixty a foot, depending on where they are, are located. I had probably six to eight sales in each appraisal. They also reported all my values.
John, could you mention the Mississippi sale? Because there is a Sam's that sold, and, and I can tell you that when they sell these buildings, they have a couple of shots at some real big retailers who will buy them. And when they buy them, they buy them anywhere between twenty to thirty-five dollars a foot. At Home is one. Tractor Supply is one. So there are a couple of big-box retailers that are national that'll pay that. If not, what happens is like what happened in Germantown Road, the hot spot for retail in Memphis. It sold. Nobody wanted it. I mean, it is literally in a big line of big-box stores. So it's not a bad location or anything like that, but nobody wanted it. And it ended up selling for self-storage. And so, and that sold for, I think, twenty dollars a square foot. I don't know if you remember that one, but.
Yeah, it was twenty a foot.
So that's what happens if a big retailer. So either you get somewhere around thirty to thirty-five dollars a square foot, if a big retailer wants it, or you get twenty dollars a square foot, and it goes to something like being subdivided into smaller places or self-storage. But tell me just about the Mississippi sale in twenty sixteen.
What was the sale that I told you about? It was next to North Park. At Home bought it. It was the old Sam's. It sold back in twenty sixteen for twenty-one fifty a foot.
Do we have any questions? Ms. Sullivan, you have anything to add?
I'll just, I can go over some things that I pointed out in the appraisal, but let me come up there. Now, on the Sam's, I don't know if y'all are aware of it, that's part of the Rita project, and it can't be.
Oh, all right, Walmart period. But he listed the Bass Pro.
I did. I went over all of them.
This is something, and I think John has appraised all the Walmarts across the state of Mississippi. And I do agree, and he's, when you say one of the best appraisers, most respected appraisers in the state of Mississippi, for sure. It's just, an appraisal is opinion of value, and our opinions don't agree with each other. To get down to some of the values that he has on the Walmarts, you would have to have fifty-nine percent depreciation, sixty-nine percent depreciation. And that's when we value something that is good, and y'all know these Walmarts, I mean, they take care of them. So some of our arguments will be the, the depreciation and the things that they're selling for as vacant. A lot of times, I didn't see in the appraisal report Walmart may have restrictions. And I don't know if these properties have restrictions to people they can sell it to, but that also has an impact on value. But I'm judging by talking to the other assessors in the state, and I talked to Jack in Lamar County and Nick in Jackson County, our consensus is we have a difference in opinion. So that's about it.
The ones in the other counties you talked to, are they, I mean, are they kind of close to where you are?
Unless, unless you have other questions for the representatives of Walmart or the appraiser, then we can, we can move to go ahead and close that public hearing. Has anybody got any other questions about that? Or of your assessor? Okay? We'll close that public hearing then. On the item that is before you, the Walmart matter. It is now time to, would be, be appropriate to close that public hearing. It's now time to, it'd be appropriate to take action on that matter. The recommendation would be to accept the assessor's assessment of value for the Walmart Real Estate Business Trust properties.
Do I have a motion? Motion by Steve, second by Daniel. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
We'll open the hearing on the Sam's Real Estate Business Trust. That's parcel D eight L dash twenty A, D eight L dash twenty B. Again, the same representatives, Ms. Nickel, and also Mr. Prater is appraiser. I believe that they have already addressed to you adequately. I'll ask with respect to the properties that are subject to the Sam's Real Estate Business Trust hearing.
Well, that is the Rita, right?
This is going to be the Rita property. And as you know, under the, under the Development Authority Act, the objector is not authorized to both participate in the Rita Development Authority Act and object to the assessment of value that is rendered. And so we will close that public hearing. At this time, it would be appropriate to take action.
Motion by Steve, second by Brad. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
So just for clarity and for the purpose of the record, Ms. Nickel has indicated her intention to provide the documentation that has been presented to the tax assessor to this board, sitting in deliberative process. And so we will allow them to leave their documentation here on our table. That will be made a part of the record to the extent that there is an intention to appeal this board's decision to retain the assessor's assessment of value. That will be a part of the record that would go up on appeal. Very good. Those matters are closed. This time, we'll move along, and I'll allow the representatives, y'all, y'all made the part. Bland Williams Investment Company is the next item, parcel D eight C dash fifteen. Representative is Crow LLP. I can't pronounce that name, and so I'll just move along. My understanding is there's no one here representing Bland Williams Investment Company. And so we'll open that public hearing this time, and we'll also close that public hearing. It would be appropriate to take action on item N.
Make a motion.
Motion by Brad, second by Jared. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Item O is the Voith US Inc. Personal Property. This is, this is a personal property assessment objection. You'll see the appropriate PIN numbers reflected there. They are objecting to an assessment of value of personal property. The representative is Pat Sloan. I'm given to understand that there's no one here on behalf of Voith US Inc. Therefore, we'll move along. We'll close that public hearing. At this time, it would be appropriate to take action on item O.
Okay.
Much approved.
Motion by Steve, second by Jared. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Gentlemen, that concludes the objections and protest to property tax assessments. I want to thank our assessor for the work that has been done on the assessment side and gathering up this information. And I look forward to seeing you guys later on in the docket.
All right, thank you. Ms. Gilbert. Good morning.
How are y'all?
Good.
Um, I have an easy one, asking for authority to publish notice at the O'Leary County Tax Sale for 2019. The tax sale will be held on Monday, August thirty-first, and the authority for anyone wishing to do so to participate in the training through the website.
Motion by Daniel, second by Jared. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Ayes have it.
I have a question. Caroline, I have a question. I mean, I could, oh, yes, I guess. The drive-through at, I mean, not the drive-through, the tags at the Richland office for larger vehicles.
The heavy trucks.
Yeah.
Yes.
Are they going to continue to have to come over here?
Not, we're down a person, so until we can get that going back again.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. Because I know I ran into that, too.
Yep.
I didn't know.
Yep.
We got a lot of, a lot of trucks, people come through there.
I know.
Okay, but it's, so you're thinking after the budget, maybe?
Oh, yeah, we're gonna, yeah, we should be.
Okay.
Yep.
Good deal.
Yep. Thank you very much.
Got a lot of people asking. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, Ms. Sullivan, you back up. You busy man today.
Item A, petition to change the assessment for 2019 real property assessment.
Motion by Steve, second by Jared. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Item B, petition to adjust the exemption on the 2019 home state exemption supplement rule.
Motion by Jared, second by Steve. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Item C, request approval of certain home state exemption accounts from the 2020 home state exemption deletion file.
Much approved.
Motion by Jared, second by Brad. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Ayes have it.
And item D, you can expend the one mil for me, doing my job.
Motion approved.
Motion by Jared, second by Steve. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Ayes have it. Thank you, John. Mr. Harris.
Morning.
Morning.
I request approval for ceasefire utility permit on Kitty Hawk Circle off Highway twenty-five.
Motion by Daniel, second by Jared. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Ayes have it.
Request approval for fanning water on Stump Bridge Road to install a water line.
Motion by Steve, second by Daniel. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
We've done this. They, I've just got two more bridges ready. We talked about it in the budget here another day. So I'll just put it on the agenda to let y'all know that we'll have, we're ready to go with Greenfield and Shiloh Road Bridge Project.
How much are those going to cost?
Those are going to cost, uh.
He goes glasses.
I ain't got no glass on, but anyway, five fifty for both of them.
Five hundred fifty thousand?
Yes, sir.
And I know you, we didn't budget that, so we're just going to take it out of cash? Well, we won't have it this year, anyway. It'll be next year. Okay.
So I mean, basically, we're, we're ready, we'll be ready to cut a PO for this, but I mean, it'd probably be eight, eight to twelve weeks before we can get the components in, two months.
Okay, all right. Do you have a motion?
Make a motion.
Motion by Brad, second by Jared. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Ayes have it.
Hey, Mike, what was the deal on the Pine Brook Bridge?
Actually, we're starting on that this week.
I just got to send a notification out to those homeowners.
Actually, we're digging it up. We got the demo.
Did you get all your components in? I know we were delaying.
We've got the components in. I've actually got invited back here a while ago to meet with the bridge guy this week to start talking about that. We actually got that one in Garrett Road. Two of them, the components will be in any time, and we're going to get started on those.
That was our major delay on that, because I know we planned on doing that in February or March, but our delay was we couldn't get the components in to do that.
Right, and that's why if all, all this stuff, I mean, everything is done by order until you issue a PO, they won't even start making the components for you, so.
I didn't think we had approved it back. I didn't think we approved it till after then.
What bridge is it?
February. Isn't that subdivision that got washed out?
That Pine Brook subdivision.
Oh, try to address some of the drainage issues.
But I said, I called it by different names. I may have.
Yeah.
I may have said something.
But yes, what they got the power unhooked, we're actually meeting this week to look at a few utilities and things we got that could be tight.
Back in, I guess, November, December, we had an emergency situation, and we had all those homes, roads flooded.
Yeah, I saw, this is where we voted to increase the road.
Well, we, yeah, we did all that six, eight months ago. We hadn't been able to start it.
Well, we actually got that in the bond project.
Time flies, I guess.
The bridge, the bridge and the, the bridge and the building, the cul-de-sacs up in, is, is figured in the bond project, right?
That's correct.
We'd already voted.
Bridge is in the bond project? Yes, sir, because we, we had allocated the money back earlier in the year for. When we did the bond, we allocated some money for Pine Brook to try to address some drainage issues. And then once we identified the bridge and the cul-de-sac, then we more.
We thought we'd had that done by February.
This is the bridge that's not open. It has culverts that were installed by the developer. Okay, so what we're doing now is replacing it with a bridge that is open underneath, no culverts, to allow for much better flow. We think it's going to help us upstream with a couple of other subdivisions that are experiencing some issues.
Any other question for Mike? Thank you. Mr. Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first item we have on the agenda is on the Andrew Chapel Road Bridge Replacement Project. We recommend an approval of payout number ten to Joe McGee Construction, Inc., in the amount of one hundred forty-eight thousand, two hundred and twenty-three dollars and sixty-seven cents. We reviewed it against our records and recommend a payment and authority to issue the check. That's a District Four project.
Are they working?
I'm not sure if they are today, but they've been doing a good bit of dirt work yesterday.
They did yesterday?
I, I don't know if they did.
I thought you said yesterday. You didn't? Oh, okay, I was going to go, wow, they're working it out. We can't get them out there on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Sure. I make a motion that we issue it, and we stand there and watch them work.
We have somebody doing that.
Okay.
When they're there.
Yeah.
All right, motion by Steve to approve. Second by Jared. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Item B, Mr. President. Item B, Mr. President, so anxious to get to this one. Spillway Road, North Shore Project. We're, we're request approval of payout number eleven to Hemp Hill Construction in the amount of one hundred and sixty-three thousand, six hundred and eighty-one dollars and sixty cents. That's for work performed through May of two thousand twenty.
Somebody out the hall. No, I, I'm just, Janice, would you call out there and see if they're here? I think they're, I think they're here to come in and talk to us.
They came last meeting.
Did they?
Yeah.
They finally found a place, took them sixteen months.
No, don't worry about that. I, I looked. We're good.
Are you sure?
Yeah, I'm positive.
What if, what if they're out there? This is the one time they showed.
They came last meeting. You weren't here. They said they weren't coming back.
We'll see if we can get them to come back here. I'm going to table this, if they come back here to the meeting and talk to us. I'm going to make backup. I'm gonna table this, if they come back here to the meeting and talk to us, I'm, made backup. My motion is to table it until Hemp Hill wants to come in here and talk to me about it. So we're gonna hold one hundred and sixty-three thousand, six eighty-one, sixty for the road work to be performed. I know they've already done the work, I know this will work up until May on the calendar side of it. But at some point, we've gotta ask, reach down into our hearts and ask Hemp Hill to come in and explain to me why we're in August of 2020 on a project that began in December of 2018, on a ninety-day project.
Twenty eighteen.
Twenty eighteen. Isn't that crazy? We awarded the project in December of 2018, so, that's my motion.
Alright, we have a motion to table it.
Stop paying them though, if they've already done the work. I mean, that's really not right. Just to get them to come talk to you, I mean, that's really, I mean, that's not quite fair. Or contractor just says, I'm gonna hold your money because I want to talk to you. I mean, for them to explain it, I understand, but I mean, to hold their money and work they've done, just so you can have a conversation with them, that, that ain't quite professional either.
What I would like to have the conversation on is when we're gonna finish this project. We keep pumping money down a project that we're being abused on. So I don't wanna wa, I don't wanna waste, uh, any more time in getting this project complete. That's my biggest issue on the whole deal. I've got, I've got sidewalks that aren't finished, we've had drains stopped up and collapsed, there's striping, it hadn't been done, another striping had to be waited until they get the right measurements, and then all that kinda magical wording that they have in their stuff. I understand all that, but the project's not complete. Nobody's been out there to work since May when this happened, they came out there and did some tests and things like that, and, and they're, they're slow played us, they're totally abusing the system that's out there. And the people out there are frustrated, I'm extremely frustrated, I've never seen a disaster of a project in my little short term as a county supervisor has gone on with this Hemp Hill Construction project. And it doesn't stop. So I, I give them another hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars today and say, okay, here's another hundred and sixty-five thousand, draw this out six, eight, ten more months. I can't draw this project out any longer.
Tim, why aren't they out there working?
Alright, so let me take you, if, if I can, can I go back to May and just kind of walk through May and July to, to date?
May of what year?
Two thousand twenty.
Oh, this one, okay.
Yes, sir. Uh, so the final asphalt.
They were working in May of 2019, also.
Not to be confused.
I wonder.
So the, uh, we were working, uh, they placed the final asphalt at the end of May. Uh, so, at that point, they have to wait a certain amount of time, and this is a significant amount of time, a few weeks, before they can put the permanent striping down. Uh, that's the time we got the big rain out there, and, uh, the road flooded out. Uh, so, we ended up, they ended up putting the TV, so, so they didn't want to put the permanent striping down because we thought we had another issue, and they didn't want to have to mess up their striping. So, they brought, uh, crews out there and put a TV camera in the, uh, in the line, found a blockage, cleaned it out. Uh, I think the rains had helped clean it out too, so, the pipes were clean, we haven't had any more drainage issues since then, so that takes us...
Let me stop you, Tim, you're a hundred percent right, everything you said is right on the money to that point. But what took us finding the block in the drainage was our guys going out there by total neglect on Hemp Hill's part to be sure that the areas were clean and ready to drain. So what happened was, we have a total flooding of the situation, cars get stranded in there, Mike has to go out there for my road department, go through these culverts and figure out that it's a stoppage. We shouldn't be having to do that kinda stuff. They should take care of their site, they've damaged vehicles, they flooded the intersection on countless times of neglect on Hemp Hill Construction to that site. So we shouldn't be having to do that kinda stuff now, sorry about that. Now, back, back to where you were.
So, uh, so that we've still got the, so we're waiting on the striping, we've still got the sidewalk was the other, uh, major item, or the other item of work left to do. Uh, so, they, in July, there was to be a final inspection meeting with MDOT out there. So Hemp Hill said they wanted to do the sidewalk when they came to address the other punch list items. The other, the final inspection occurred about the next to the last week of July. Uh, so then, once, once that occurs, you have to produce a list of things that they need to address, uh, give them any more information that they need to address those, and they have that now. Now that, they were supposed to come back last week and do the sidewalk.
Hey, when did we give them the list?
Uh, I, I don't remember exactly, Jay, when it was, it was sometime, probably around the first, first of August, somewhere in that first week of August.
So we just missed the whole month of July?
Well, you can't give them the list until after the MDOT meeting, which happened at the end of July. So that the list is generated from the meeting with MDOT out there, it's a punch list.
We missed the month of June, but that's vacation month, you know, so you don't want to do anything in another month.
So they got their list in August.
So they got their list, here we are in August, and, uh, they had reported to us that they were gonna pour the sidewalk, uh, I don't remember if it was last Thursday or Friday, get back out there and work on it. Uh, and weather called them, it, it, it rained those, that day. Uh, so, here we are today with no sidewalk poured and no striping done.
So they got the, they basically had, so the first week in, uh, August, roughly, somewhere in there, they got the report of what they needed to do. So basically, they've been a week now after they got it. So this is the next...
Yes, sir. And I'm not exact on those, I, I...
Yeah, but I'm just saying, so you really only talk about a week, ten days, and then it got rained out. Okay, I understand all that, and I understand your frustration, I agree with your frustration, I just don't agree with not paying them just to make them come here and talk, and I don't think not paying them is gonna make them speed it up.
Well, there's nothing that's gonna make them speed up.
So I mean, why would we want to hold up their money then?
So why do we want to pay them for doing that?
Well, they, they have paid, they have done whatever this is, I'm assuming, they, they've done whatever work this company...
Yes, sir, this is, uh, this payment is for asphalt, some binder asphalt and the finished asphalt, so yes, sir, this, and, and the reason it lags behind so long is, uh, because you don't hold retainage on an MDOT job, uh, you gotta get all your test reporting in how, done, completed before you pay them for it. Uh, so you gotta do all the asphalt testing and, and sampling, uh, after it's placed before you can, before we're willing to go out on a limb and recommend payment.
Alright, so, we've had some drainage issues out there, and they think they have that resolved.
Yes, sir.
Hypothetically, if it's not resolved, and we still have drainage issues, whose responsibility is it gonna be to get it fixed?
So part of the punch list, there's a couple of small areas up against a curb that aren't draining, uh, and then that's part of the punch list item. So, so there's, the, the major event that occurred was a blockage in a pipe under Spillway Road.
So they...
All that, all that drainage comes together under Spillway Road, and then drains to the south, uh, through one pipe.
Have we had a, a major rain event since then?
Had a pretty good one yesterday, and I wasn't aware I could get to the intersection yesterday afternoon and see it, so, I don't know, I mean, I, I would assume that my phone would have lit up again on cars stalled in the intersection or whatever, but...
So the blockage that was under Spillway Road, there's TV camera evidence that that was cleaned.
Right.
There's video.
No, I, I get it, I just wanna, I just wanna throw a hypothetical in there, that if it's not addressed, whose responsibility is it gonna be to get it fixed? Would it be need to add more inlets?
It's certainly on the punch list, I mean, that, that would be...
Well, and, and I guess that's kind of my issue right now. The hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars they're wanting is for work that was performed in May that I don't know is, is functioning properly. I mean, maybe, maybe it is, I don't know, you ran the cameras, maybe it's there, they did the work, but if the intersection's not accessible and safe to people going through it, I don't want to cut the check for it all right then. I mean, I know we still got another fifty or sixty thousand dollars that's set back aside to it, but at some point, at some point, I beg Hemp Hill Construction to take some ownership in the job and get it done right. I mean, at, at some point, we're gonna come back here, and I'll walk into a board meeting a year from now, and we'll come back, and we'll talk about the North Shore project, that's not, that's holding water. And because it kinda ties into mine and your both districts right there, it'll be me and you sitting here saying, please, I need another million dollars to go fix this intersection.
Well, that's why I was asking the question, is, is it gonna be, our responsibility will be the contractor's responsibility?
It's had rained since May though, haven't?
Yeah, and it flooded the entire intersection with cars stuck in the middle of it.
Yeah.
No, I'm talking about after this has been fixed.
You said since May.
Well, whenever this is fixed.
No.
The, the...
That's why I just asked, there was one, I don't know if there's been a major event, uh, since then.
I don't know.
So we're gonna wait till the major event?
No, I just want to be sure it's right, I don't want to waste a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars on something that's not right, I'm not saying that y'all didn't inspect it.
This ain't all to do with that, is it? I'm just asking you.
I don't know, I don't know.
Well, that's what I'm asking, well, that's what I'm asking, Tim, this ain't, this, is this money that they're owed, is it pertaining to this drainage?
This is all asphalt that was placed, and we've done some shot verifications on the asphalt, uh... It's hard to say, if it's not draining, the asphalt might be a contributing factor, I mean, I can't say for a hundred percent it is or it's not, I mean, that's, uh, but, but the, the asphalt has been installed, and, and the asphalt is functioning...
And the punch list has something to do with some low-place holding water.
So, so why don't, so why don't we do this? Why can't we go through, if everything, I'm sure we got a detailed bill, this a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars, right? So why don't we meet out there next week or this week with Hemp Hill, Slade, he can find time, Mike, he can find time on that same point, let's come out there, we're gonna come back in another week and a half, and if it's all done the way we want to see it, I want to see it. I want to see it done right, and we'll come back.
So, the, uh...
But it's two weeks.
Right, for instance, an example is there at the most easterly entrance to Kroger there where it was holding some water, uh, that's part of the punch list, we feel like they need to mill out across that intersection, uh, which is a punch list item. So that, that would have no bearing on this money, that would be something that they have to do outside of this.
Here's what I'd like to do, I'd just like to go see the detailed work with this a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollar bill and see where it matches.
Understood.
For the next, what's, what's a week? They put me off two years, what's a week?
It's my, it is my understanding under the MDOT project, they have a claim.
Next week, next month, or six? We're not gonna, we'll be on the budget before then, won't we?
Put it on there, I'm asking.
I'm sure we put it on whatever agenda we want, but, that would be my question, two weeks.
Alright, we have a motion to table this item until, uh, we meet again by...
Whenever, whenever that is.
By Daniel, second by Steve, any discussion?
If I may, just, just to point out, the, the contract provides, uh, the contractor some rights under the contract, depending upon what the board does. So, I'm just making you guys aware that the contractor possibly could, um, present a claim for breach of contract for failure to pay. That's just, that's what could happen in light of the board's, what, what appears to be setting up for the board. I just want y'all to understand that when you vote, that...
I didn't second a motion to just table it, I second a motion to inspect it and see if the work is proper.
Absolutely.
Before we pay.
And, and that, that's clarified on the record.
And that could happen tomorrow, I don't care.
That's good.
Have this afternoon.
We've already, that's reading this here, we've already said that work's been done.
We have inspected it?
We, we, yes, sir, we, we've been out there, yes, we've, we've been out there, like I said...
A rain event that you can test it with?
There, there are area, there are some small pockets that are holding water. That, that's part of the punch list, that's part of the punch list items though, that's not, and they're, they're, it drives, it's not in the major middle of the roadway. So, those are punch list items that we have on the list for them to address. In my opinion, they're, they're not, they're not big items, uh, but, uh...
I just don't see where we can hold their money for, we have the right to hold their money so we can go inspect when it's already been inspected, and we, we're not the ones who, that can really have a, a opinion of inspection. We're not the authorities at all. I mean, you are, and, and, I mean, we're not, that's not our job.
I've just...
We're by, certainly by no means saying the project is complete.
I know that, well, I understand, we're not paying them.
There are punch list items to do. This is work completed in May that we're recommending pay.
If it didn't need our approval, it wouldn't be on this agenda to pay it. So I think my issue is, I'd just like to verify that it's right, that's all I'd like to do.
Alright, any other discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed?
No.
So, we have, uh, three, one with Brad, you are with majority, so four, one, okay.
It's just...
So what that is, we're gonna, we're table it to the next meeting until I can go out and we can look at a detailed breakdown of what the hundred and sixty-three thousand is and what they said they've done at this point. I apologize, there's no trust in Hemp Hill Construction in my heart, but there's just not.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Alright, thank you, Tim, Ms. Slade. Jared, I don't think that a week's gonna, or two weeks is gonna hurt them.
No, we don't believe, it's not our place to be...
I, I, I think they know we're gonna pay them, we just, uh, need some, some cooperation.
Well, what you're trying to do is hold them hostage, come talk to you.
Yeah, we're holding them hostage to verify the hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars that we're getting hit. You're not the one that's getting, sitting out there for the last year and a half of the...
I'm not arguing with you, I'm just saying that it's, it's...
It's not your area, it's not that important.
We move on, no, we're saying they bought it.
Mr. President, Ms. Slade, first item.
This happen in your area, would you?
I wouldn't deny a payment for what we've done, apart they've done the work, there's no need to argue about it.
I agree.
Mr. President, if I may, ask for the board's indulgent, could we slide down to item G under my section? Uh, I see that our coroner's here, and so I'd like to, uh, address item G, if I may, before we get into our hearings, I know that one, at least one of our public hearings is gonna be some, uh, some back and forth, and so...
Okay.
I, I, I would like to address that. Item G, under my section, is a discussion of and potential action regarding Rankin's, Rankin County's plan of action, if any, to address the impact of the failure of the crime laboratory to address its staffing shortfall, which has created a backlog in autopsies. We talked about this briefly at our last meeting, and there was some discussion about, uh, how the county might position itself to address what appears to be not just a one-off, uh, with our crime lab. This issue of staffing shortfalls is a recurring theme, uh, out of our crime lab. The inability to properly address, uh, autopsy requirements by the crime lab is a continuing problem that the legislature has not addressed appropriately for that agency. And as a result, for whatever reason, they're not able to get to autopsies in a meaningfully timeful, time-sensitive manner. And what it's doing is it's causing county coroners around the state to experience backlogs in dealing with, um, the deceased's and dealing with families. And so we, we want to address that issue, David, come on. We, we've got some options that are available to us to handle, um, storage issues while, uh, while not putting us in a position of having to, um, burden our local private morgues, uh, by holding our decedents for us, um, and so we, we wanted to address that with you guys one more time. So we've got some options, uh, to discuss with you.
He's talking, I guess, yeah.
Documentation out to, to number two. Where we're at currently on numbers, uh, this documentation I'm handing y'all is from, uh, the Health Department. Melissa Bryant provided this to me this morning from the nine-one-one, she's responsible for it.
David, we need to only use some larger face masks. You want me to both these? I need both these. Did you mean to do that? I got it, alright.
You got one of these?
Nope.
Okay, so... This, this blue section here, this, um, addresses the total amount of COVID-related nineteen deaths in Rankin County as of eight fourteen of this month. Uh, the second page is a breakdown of COVID-nineteen cases and deaths by age group. You'll see down at the bottom, the ones marked in red are the deaths, that total's only thirty-four, but, um, the first page indicates forty-two, but it, there again, it's only good through eight fourteen, and I had the other eight, uh, in about a three-day period last week. So, uh, that, that number there is incorrect. The second page is, um, the estimated active cases, uh, as of today, which right now in Rankin County. And we're assuming active cases, and we're assuming the people have recovered after the fourteen-day potential quarantine, so right now we're at two hundred and fifty-nine active cases county-wise. The second page of that with the county map on it is broken down into each district, uh, each one of your supervisors have that listed.
Which one are you on? This one?
I don't see a map, yes.
Alright, it's on this standout.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, this, the one with the, um, the graph on it. That, second page of that one shows the, um, each county, district, I mean, each, uh, supervisor. So, what Mr. Slade's talking about, and I, I just wanna, I guess, the calm before the storm has already occurred. Y'all been watching the news and listening to everything, I, I guess. Um, so far in the last five years, I've done the very best that I could to get our deceased taken care of in a timely manner, and, uh, but since this... but since this has happened, it has created a backlog so substantial that this is putting me into a very hurtful situation, um, into a situation where I'm just about not being able to handle. So right now, there are two places in Rankin County that is allowing me to use their facility to store someone that I have to. When I respond to a death, if there's no funeral home selected or if it's a car accident or if it's a homicide, anything that has to go for an autopsy, I have to provide storage for this person until we can figure out where they're gonna go or until the autopsy can take place. Y'all may remember a young man died as a result of a gunshot and died in Crossgate Boulevard at the Walgreens trying to get to the hospital. I went immediately and recovered him from that scene to clear that road up. And, uh, I had to store him for eight days before he was even taken to the medical examiner's office for an autopsy. He stayed out there another six days before they were able to do the autopsy. So by the time that mother was able to bury her child, it was a total of seventeen days. I had another inmate that I had to store for seven days. So taking him to these places and assuming and hoping, y'all have no idea, every time I walk up to one of those storage facilities, that I pray before I open that door to make sure it's not full. And oftentimes it has been full, and I've had to rearrange and go from there. To give you a little idea of what's at the state medical examiner's office. Inside their storage facility will hold fifteen people, fifteen decedents. That's where they put them for immediate inline autopsies. Everybody's heard about this eighteen-wheeler refrigerated, eighteen-wheeler that's out there now, uh, to relieve some of the backlog. It holds fourteen. Okay, that's a total of twenty-nine total on site at the medical examiner's office. As of this morning, before I came here, I checked, there are twenty-five, actually twenty-six, one being Rankin County is the twenty-sixth person. So that's fifty-five people this morning waiting for autopsies. They're averaging three to four a day. Okay, they told me that this inmate I'm holding, which is still in the hospital at Merrick Central where he passed, um, is number fifty-five. And he's been there since Saturday morning. Now, I don't know how long, I'm expecting a call any minute from Merrick Central to say, hey, this is our hospital, this is our morgue, this is your problem. And actually, in all reality, it's not even my problem. He died in Heinz County. I was notified by the Heinz County coroner. She was told that he came from the Rankin County facility. So that being it brought the jurisdiction back to me. So when the chaplain called me and found out, asked me why I hadn't recovered the body yet, uh, I checked into that and found out that he actually died, oh, he came from Sunflower County, from the main state penitentiary. So theoretically, it goes back to the Sunflower coroner. I called her and said, hey, you got an inmate down here. Well, I've already got three on hold. You've done all the work, so you just go ahead and handle it. You know, there's a certain amount of professionalism that we extend common courtesy, you know, to our county coroners, but you know, it's a double-edged sword for me. She's, she's got three and and holding somewhere off-site, so that's an expense she's having to bear. And so now I'm having to bear her expense. I can't make her take him. So, you know, and we have to hold him because state law says that autopsy is gonna be done on inmates.
What is, what's your solution?
All these numbers that you're talking about COVID-related or some of these?
No, sir. No, sir. They are not. Now, the one inmate that I had that was stored for seven days, he was COVID-related. He was COVID-positive. The medical examiner says, do not bring him out here. We will, we will rule on his death on medical records. But it still took him for seven days to do that. I provided the medical records to him.
So why did they all quit?
Well, I'm not here to discuss that. So, uh, that's, that's just a whole nother, another issue.
So do you have a solution in mind?
Well, the only thing that I can say, everybody's trying their best to get their own, uh, storage facility. Uh, I know that, you know, I've heard so many ranges, a lot of people are going to, um, this forensic cooler place, uh, who's, you know, you're paying for what they do. Um, Mr. Dean out here, he says, I'm not going to, not going to a forensic place. I'm going to a restaurant supply. He goes and buys a restaurant cooler. Forty degrees is forty degrees. It don't matter. So you you go from a thirty thousand dollar cooler to a ten thousand dollar cooler. You know, but then there is a little bit of expense to, uh, you you can make it a three-person cooler, or you can make it a five-person by getting a utility rack, uh, where you could store three at a time. Mr. Chancellor holds three.
I'll ask you how big one is.
Uh, Mr. Chancellor's is a stand-up alone. It'll hold three people of your size. It'll only hold two of my size. So, uh, you know, and and what I try to do is, when I'm in a bind and I need a facility, I try to use the closest one so I can get that person cared for as quickly as possible. So if it's South Forty-Nine, anywhere down that part of Rankin County, Mr. Chancellor has allowed me to do that. And, uh, so, uh, for instance, the the two, the two young ladies that were killed in the automobile accident that morning, uh, down there on Seven Day Avenue. Right in, uh, yes, sir. Uh, I took them to Chancellor's, opened it, and he was full. So I had to move on to Dean's. And here's the issue with that. Here lately, I've, Dean's has been full, Chancellor's has been full, Dean has been allowing me to, he's, he's been sending people in to to get his people taken care of. Uh, it's stacking up on us, and they, like everybody else now, have started charging.
So what's, uh, what size do you need? What kind of cost is it?
I think we looked at an eight by twelve, and just the cooler alone, uh, is ten thousand.
Is that, is that similar to the one just like you have at a, um, restaurant supply or anything like that?
Right, it's a walk-in.
Yeah, I've read on floors in them. I know that was shown out.
You know, they're self-standing, they're self-contained, and, uh, they, uh, you know, but the thing, the biggest obstacle or issue to me is having a secure location.
Have what?
Secure location. So we definitely would have to have a place, you know, where I could come and go and, you know, and it be in a, and behind something locked.
So what if we rented a trailer and parked it behind the jail?
Problem getting up in the trailer.
Yeah, I'm not as young as you are and, uh, but, uh.
It had to have a lift, some type of lift.
Yeah, I don't have a lift because you you know, a standard height, I I think, Jared, you probably could, the back of an eighteen-wheeler is at least five and a half feet, five feet off the ground.
Yeah.
That too, and.
No road tax, though.
And I've. And I've discussed with Slade too.
Thirty cents guaranteed.
I I'm proud of Rankin County where we're at, and I'd like to thank that we'd have a little more respect for our decedents than to put them in the back of an eighteen-wheeler trailer.
Well, the problem, even if we took the wheels out of it and all that, I mean, still, I mean, that's the only way to get it down. You couldn't put them in a, you couldn't do that. You know, unless you had a Tommy lift-type lift that raised up, went in a sophisticated-type thing.
Exactly.
You're looking at another two, eight thousand dollars or more for that.
Yeah, sure.
There, there are options that are available. The location, there is an option that could be made available that is secure. Uh, the cost could be minimized somewhat by just, um, being created with the the kind of device that's available that will work. This would be in the nature of a short-term arrangement. Um, I I think it it probably would allow for us to have a better control over issues like chain of custody. Um, that's, that's always been a problem for us when we are using outside third parties to provide this service to us. They do that, uh, for for multiple reasons, but one of those reasons is simply as a courtesy to their home county. So we appreciate the fact that they make their facilities available to us to help us with this. However, uh, there's, there's a bit of a quid pro quo there as well, uh, and I think we all recognize that. Uh, from the legal, from a legal standpoint, I would feel much better about a situation where we were in control of that location. Uh, so that chain, from a chain of custody standpoint, we don't run into possible legal impediments of a criminal prosecution nature. Okay, that makes sense. So there are options available to us. The purpose for this item being on the agenda today is to get feedback from you guys to tell us, do we want to even explore the options that could be made available to us to essentially take responsibility for the warehousing or storing of decedents for a period of time until they can be dealt with? Do we want to do that?
Okay, is there not a place somewhere like, um, I guess E O C that'd be more secure?
Yes, so that is one of the options that would be available to us. Uh, and and so we've, we've begun looking at that as, from a viability standpoint. That is an option that could be available to us. Obviously, the board has complete discretion on location, how, manner, time, place, cost, all of that. That's still within your purview. What what we don't want to do is to initiate a process that the board is not interested in on the front end. So, uh, we need feedback. Do you guys want us to pursue options available to you to handle our own storage?
I don't know what else to do.
What, what size you talking about?
Right now, the the one, um, eight-foot by twelve-foot is the one that's, uh, out there at Dean's now. I certainly think we need more than just a three-person because, uh, I have recovered three from one accident site. So recovered it. And just to give you another number, um, they actually started log books out there, you know, when we started this, and we started it in, um, in September of last year. And between the two funeral homes allowing me to use our facility, um, I have, I have used those a total of sixty times already in ten months, eleven months. Because, you know, there's some incidents where somebody don't know which funeral home it is, you know, situations where I can't wait because I've got another call holding. I just have to recover that person as quickly as possible, get him stored, him or her, and then move on to another call. Our calls have drastically increased. Some are from COVID, uh, majority of them are not, but, uh, never in the history of Rankin County have we ever worked one hundred deaths in a month like we did last month. So, but, I mean, I can't explain that this is an off-year compared to the last four years, but, uh, the big mortuary in Jackson will not even accept anybody here. They're not accepting any of the outside sources because now they are having to pick up all the COVID nineteen deaths. That's one of the, you call into a funeral home out of report of passing, and the last question they say, they ask you, any flu-like symptoms or COVID nineteen? You say, yes, okay, we're sending greater Jackson. They won't even come out anymore. So I think the last time I heard, they had already taken in over four thousand people so far this year.
David, here's one that's, uh, about eleven thousand. It's a ten by twelve. And, uh, but it, I will say, it's, any of them are gonna be this. I'm sure two twenty, that's by eleven-horse motor, two twenty. So you have to have two twenty to run, to operate it.
Don't they have some that you can come and build on site?
That's what this is.
Yeah, it's a panel system. You just put the inserts together and it's all insulated and.
Yeah, this, this is, it comes in pieces. Most of them come in pieces.
Put it where?
Put the walls and all up.
These are details that, uh, that need to be fleshed out. Uh, we've got to do our best, uh, to get you guys a, an actual proposal. We just don't want to go through the trouble, the time, without, uh, without knowing that you guys are open, uh, to that as a solution for us, a long-term solution. You you've heard that the backlog at the medical examiner's office is not COVID-related. We agree with that. It's not. Uh, last, last month's numbers, however, are clearly COVID-related. Uh, and so we're gonna do everything that we can, recover cost in accordance with our already in-place plan to submit that as a reimbursement item, uh, and let them tell us no on that. We just, we're, we're being as open as we can with you guys as to what is the purpose.
Reimbursement.
Yes, sir. That's correct. Uh, all of this will be submitted, however, uh, I I don't know whether or not, if asked directly, that we can, we we will be able to adequately establish that the purpose for our doing this is related to the virus outbreak.
Believe it or not, for really for the, if we could do something like this from ten to fifteen. I mean, I don't see where the real argument is. If we got a place and, I don't know, if we got a place that we could probably put it.
So there are gonna be ancillary costs. You've got to deal with the power utilization. There's gonna be a maintenance requirement. There's gonna be, you know, there's gonna be a continuing obligation on this. So you've got to think about this in terms of long-term cost, uh, to the county. There will be some additional costs beyond just acquisition. All right, so we need to keep that in mind. Um, and and rendering the location secure is gonna take some thought. Okay, and so there will be some access issues that we'll have to deal with, the potential for some, uh, chain of custody-type requirements that we have to be careful about. Uh, and so I just, you know, eyes wide open for you guys and understanding what the dynamics are here. So, uh, but you've got to indicate to us before we go farther that you're open to a process that calls for the county to handle its own storage requirements.
Well, I think it's something we need to look at. From what I understand, Madison County has some, the same situation, and I believe he said he was with all his equipment, his lift and everything, uh, because, you know, we, right now to date, my heaviest person's been seven hundred and thirty-five pounds. So we definitely would have to have a lift to assist with that. But I think with their equipment and their, their cooler, it was somewhere around twenty thousand. But now they have that in a secured area inside their nine one one building. Well, let me ask you, the, well, that's something I guess you kinda need to look at because these doors are usually like, uh, four-foot doors.
Right.
So, and I don't know what kind of lift and how it works. Is theirs this size?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, so the the lift works okay going in there and being maneuvered inside?
The lifts are only probably about two foot, and, uh, you know, they're hydraulic and they're lifted up six feet. And that helps, like, there's a three-capacity rack, steel rack, that you could put them, you know, the first and second racks not a problem. The third rack is most of the time.
This is what, what was it, ten feet?
So what's the plan that you and Word are gonna come up with?
I was gonna say, Mike Word's always got a plan. Word, can you get like thirty seconds? I didn't mean that, like fifteen seconds.
I had a, I had a phone, uh, email last week on, uh, some reefer trailers and, uh,
Refrigerated trailer.
Yes, not, not, uh, a share company, not that kind of reason. Um, refrigerated trailers, uh, from Texas are about ten thousand dollars each, but they are a hundred percent shore power, not diesel. They're all shore power, which is the big thing.
They're what kind of power?
Shore power. Just plug it up. It doesn't run on diesel.
Right.
Uh, all of your diesels are, um, direct drives, so you gotta have somebody to put this.
No, I, I think we'd rather not have the diesel.
So it's all, uh, electrical.
Twenty-six.
Operated. My thoughts were if I was, if I, and this is not my realm by any means, uh, just trying to help, uh, your corner out in a, in a time of need, my immediate thoughts were.
He's yours too.
That's true. My immediate thoughts were to, uh, to get us out of a pinch in short term was if the, uh, if that reefer trailer is what it's supposed to be, and they claim it is, to put it up at the top shop, put a awning around it, close it in, take the, uh, cut the landing gear and the axles out from under it, it's sitting on the ground, and and now you got a six-inch lift to to roll your, your stretchers in.
You got to drive around for, yeah. It's, it's pretty good job to take that out.
If you cut the landing gear and.
Yeah, it's pretty good job to take them out, but yeah, I mean, that's the idea.
About an hour would have cut and torch.
So what is it currently located there?
A little more than that.
I, I just cut one out about two years ago.
Would you have something to lift it to?
Yeah, a Ford lift.
Yeah, yeah.
So what's currently located there?
Right now, a unbelievably good six-ten foundation that Mr. Harrison put in for us last year when we were gonna put a addition on that shop.
Okay.
He's already done the dirt work, the whole night. As a matter of fact, he's already running, I don't know what kind of power that is up there.
What was that? How was that sound, David?
Two twenty? It's already two twenty on that wall. It's already 220 on that wall.
I know it sounds, the word refrigerator trailer doesn't sound great.
We can dress up the outside.
Basically the same thing.
That information came from Mema, from Matt Hughes. There's a lot of corners across the state that are having the same issue.
I got you.
And they're just trying to find solutions to help folks out.
What size are they?
They're 48s.
48.
So it's a 610 pad? You said a 610 that he put in?
It's CR 610, Crush Rock.
Talking about foundations, I already sit on them. Because the one that we were looking at here a minute ago, the door ain't going to be wide enough, it's not 26 inches wide.
You've got to have pretty good wide opening, go in with a stretch.
26's only that wide. That would sound, that would sound right for a walk-in cooler, does it? Everyone's, I've been on, been, I believe, by like a four-foot door.
No, this one's not four foot out there. But just to let y'all do some math on that, right now, we got, right now, we have a bill coming for our storage on two people for $750. And I've used those places a total of 60 times. So the math is fixing to start getting phenomenal.
So they changed their mind on not charging us, huh?
Well, yes, but after, after a whole year of free, I don't see, I can't complain. You know, it's not their responsibility to pay for their own thing and then me go out there and take, take stuff out of their cooler for us. You know, and expect them not to, I mean, I guess that's business. And those are the cheaper ones, I promise you, the storage goes up higher than that.
Yeah.
Some of them are 75 a day.
Well, if we get into this, I sure don't want to be taking on others, you know?
That, yeah, I hate to be responsible for other people's.
Well, the storage cost works both ways.
I don't even want, I wouldn't even want to go that way.
See, and that's another thing too, I heard Madison County charged a funeral home here $175 for a removal and a storage. I am 100% in agreement with you, Jay, that I don't want to start going to every scene and removing somebody for all the funeral homes here. You know, it's still their responsibility, that's part of the, you know, the family's paying them for service, and that's their responsibility. I don't want to start picking up every person that I go to. I mean, because you could see at 100 a month, and we're averaging 70 a month right now. July was a very off month, but right now, we're averaging 70 a month, so you can imagine how out of hand that would get. And if it, you know, if it got to a point where.
Well, there is some type of fee though, isn't it?
There's a removal fee, charged by the funeral homes, or the person that picks them up, but, you know, would the county try to start implementing that, you know?
No, I was simply saying, I wouldn't want to get into doing other counties, you know.
They've got a little ramp up.
Yeah. Well, I guess we don't have a choice, we're going to do something, so we just need to come up with a plan or the best way to approach it.
Give us a couple ideas, I mean, come back with, say, here's this and this will be the cost, and if you don't like this, here's this. Put a check by the one you like best.
Hey, Mike, you know, they make those smaller refrigerator box trailers that you see, you know, Cisco and all them using, is any of them available?
Like an ice cream truck.
No, I mean, you know, they got some instead of being 48, they're probably 28, what, 30 foot?
All these people going as deer processing businesses, they're building coolers in their buildings.
48 will be kind of big. I mean, think about it, 48 foot long, eight, almost eight foot wide, but they do have double doors, and they, you can be secured, they're very, in fact, some of them have double locks on them, but at least they got that one big cam lock that you could lock.
If Word's getting that stuff from Mema and through FEMA stuff, they've got that priced out, set up for the disaster relief locations, I mean, that's what they're set up for.
I just wondered if they had a smaller one, wasn't quite as big.
I think that's what they just, their standard.
Could you find, could you find a cooler for Mema? I mean, if you're asking me as a county coroner, I prefer a cooler, standalone cooler preferred over an 18-wheeler trailer, but, I mean, at this point, I'm willing to, I'll take what I can get.
So let me, in anticipation of this very question, I quizzed both Mema and the technical division state auditor's office about state contract, none of this stuff is on state contract, not one of these items. We're not in the business of securing shore-powered cooler or diesel-powered coolers as a state contract item, so put that out ahead. It's more than likely going to have to be a quote item, and we're going to have to try to find what is the best suited solution for you guys. So really, all we're asking you to do today is to indicate clearly that we are moving forward to this process and to develop a plan that addresses the need and allow y'all to consider at least two or three different options, okay? So we'll put the plan together and we'll come back and talk to you guys on September the 3rd or September the 8th. That's our next opportunity to talk to you about it.
Is there any grant money out there, federal grant money?
I have no clue what's available. I think our best bet here, honestly, is to make a decision on how we want to address this problem, and then implement the solution, and then go ask Mema to give us CARES Act funds in reimbursement. That's our best solution.
Okay. All right.
I'm good.
Thank you, Dave.
So that would be your motion, gentlemen?
Thank you for your time.
Do we actually need a motion on this?
Yes, sir, I need a motion that authorizes your staff, however that's composed, to develop at least two solutions for you, if not more, to address the issue of storage.
I'll make a motion.
Second. Motion by Brad, second by Steve, any discussion? I would like for one of the options to be where your new location is going to be, to see what that cost would look like, since you're going to be there, you know, it would make sense to be monitored. Any discussion?
The old pantry facility.
Building, he's going in the basement?
No, uh-uh, coroner's upstairs.
Well, he's going in the basement? He very easily could go in the basement, ain't nobody going anywhere. So, but originally, he was going in the basement.
Election commissioners. No, sir, just said election commissioners.
Election commissioners.
So there's more than adequate room, because we only have five, you know, and we're putting everybody else upstairs. I think we have adequate room.
Problem was, problem was traffic going up and down.
You're, the problem what?
Traffic going up and down, not being handicapped and everything, except.
How you figure, it's drive up to the back door.
I'll just tell you what, we talked about, we never talked about anything down there but them, he can put whatever he want down there, I'm just saying, I don't remember anything talked about other than the election commissioners. Look, he put whatever, no matter.
We'll address all of those in the proposal, Jay.
Sounds good to me.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Mr. President, we'll go back up to item A under my section now, which is to set a public hearing. I'll tell you what, let's take A, B, and C together, those are setting hearings on September 3 at 9:00 AM, you'll see them listed there.
I'll make a motion.
All right, motion by Brad, set the hearings. Second by Daniel, any discussion?
Make sure I got them all covered here. Okay, that one's on there. That's one we talked about, thought it was named something else. We've got another one on there, Renee, the one for, in Florence Circle, it's on there.
Probably gonna have to go on the October one because the town period hasn't, he had removed that one time before the September 3rd. He's got a letter, but it gives him 30 days.
Has it been his 30 days?
Yes, sir, and it won't leave out of here by September 30.
And then you got the, okay, that one, okay, well, Stanford, he's on, the Stafford's on there, yeah. I'll just look and see which one's on there. Okay. All right, I'll make a motion.
All right, no other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Ayes have it.
Mr. President, under the public hearing section, the first item, item D, is a public hearing on the Brantley Moore Conditional Use Permit McIntyre Lane, that's a District 4 property. We'll open that public hearing. Mr. Moore seeking a conditional use permit to place a 2020 16 by 76 manufactured home on McIntyre Lane. This is a 5.8 acre parcel of family land, it's Zoned RE1. Mr. Moore seeking a conditional use permit under the hardship section of the RE1 zoning classification. His grandmother, father, and stepmother have medical issues and they need extra assistance. That public hearing is open, I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Brantley Moore Conditional Use Permit request. Anyone to speak in opposition on that? See that Mr. Moore is present, he's obviously not going to speak in opposition to it. So we will close that public hearing unless the board has questions or is curious about conditions, we will close that public hearing. Any conditions for that?
If he's a furnished, he'll have to separate an anchor for that home, but he's planned on doing that, he just wanted to make sure before he split that meeting.
I'll make a motion. We go with.
Second. A motion with Steve, second by Jared, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Ayes have it.
Thank you. Mr. President, item E is a public hearing on the Michael Nichols Conditional Use Permit at 269 West Petros Road. We'll hold just a moment until we can clarify who is here. Michael Nichols is seeking a conditional use permit for a lawn service business at 269 West Petros Road. The business has been operated out of a metal building located next to his home for over two years. Property is not open to the public, there are no retail sales there. Work related to equipment is stored behind the building and is not visible from the road. Employees come to the shop in the morning and return at the end of the workday. Mr. Nichols owns a seven-acre parcel, that property is Zoned RE1A. That hearing is open, I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Michael Nichols Conditional Use Permit request. Is anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter? I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter. The applicant is available if the board has any questions. At this time, we'll close that public hearing.
I'll make motion approved.
Second. Motion approved by Jared, second by Steve, any discussion?
Yeah, I want to discuss something. What's the deal, I mean, if you run a landscape deal, people meet up there at your house, load up and go to work, I mean, how is that considered a business?
Well, it's operated out of that location, Brad, and so we look at the use of the property, and so not everything is created equally, correct? So it's a technical violation. What we like to do with our zoning regulations is just to make it clear on the record that we're aware of that situation and that it is a technical violation, but it's not such of a, of an operation of a business because it's limited in scope. So in this situation, we're able, the board is able to hear that the applicant has certain things that are going on there that would trigger the technical violation of a business operation, but it's limited in scope such that it doesn't run afoul of what we think is fair or appropriate for the community, okay? So parking employee vehicles there, that's, you know, short-term kind of parking situation, not a lot of retail activity, if any, that satisfies us, we're fine with that. We just want a seat at the table to make sure that we know what's going on there and that everybody in the community knows that we know what's going on there.
Well, that's the big thing, that everybody cleared it up for the community.
Yes.
I mean, like carpooling is all it is, I mean, pick a park, load it up, you know?
Yes, and we want the applicant to understand that, you know, it's being viewed, it's being watched, and so let's keep it within the confines that everybody's aware of. If we expand and go beyond that, we haven't authorized it, we have an additional seat at the table, and nobody can later argue, you let me have it here, okay? So it's clear on.
Whenever, like, say he moves, that condition goes away also. So whoever buys the next one doesn't get grandfathered in.
That's absolutely correct. All right, so that's, that's closed.
All in favor, say aye.
Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Item F is a public hearing on the S&amp;B Real Estate LLC Conditional Use Permit Request at 1911 Highway 471. I understand, Mr. President, that we have both the applicant present and we may have some who object to this application present, so I want to give an opportunity to get everybody in here before we start that one.
Renee, you say you's going to have that other guy here?
West Petros.
Oh, we are, but it's going to be, we wanted to get this one done first.
Yeah, but we're not doing it next month?
We will next, well, not in September, but the next, because we got to get a notice.
All right.
That public hearing is open, this is the S&amp;B Real Estate LLC Conditional Use Permit Request. That public hearing is open. Let me educate the board on what the request is. S&amp;B Real Estate LLC, it's a Mississippi business corporation, is seeking Conditional Use Permit to place an ice vending machine at the Marathon Lakeside Food Mark Convenience Store at 1911 Highway 471. This is right there behind, behind and 471. Ice machine will be located on the south side of the building in the parking lot, so this is a standalone vending apparatus. It's not insignificant, may want to talk to them about the coroner's situation. Property is 1.69 acre parcel, it's Zoned C2, and so here's the key for you, since it's C2, it's not allowed outright, and so the applicant has to come and ask for a conditional use. That gives the board the ability to either accept or reject the application or to set condition, and/or set conditions if you choose. Your staff has looked at this situation, has some recommendations here, but we'll go ahead and conduct the public hearing and give those who are either in favor or opposed an opportunity to present information to the board. So at this time, that hearing is open. I will ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the S&amp;B Real Estate LLC Conditional Use Permit Request. Anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter? You'll come forward, please, state your name and address for the record.
Hey. I'm Reagan Cooper. I am a Mississippi minority business owner, and I am looking at purchasing the property across the street. I'm in the process of purchasing 1902 Highway 471 in Brandon, which is the former Glen Walden Fish House that you might be familiar with. I have also submitted an application to the board to be brought forward in two weeks on September the 3rd, as well for an ice machine on the property, and our machine, our machine actually goes across the street, and so it is a concern to me to have someone leasing the property at the gas station to also put in an ice machine.
You're going to need to state your address.
Of the property, or?
No.
I'm at 104 Fairmont Cove in Brandon, Mississippi. 1047.
It could be like the gas, couldn't it? Going to go down, level go up.
Right.
Is there anyone, anyone else to speak in opposition on this matter? Before the staff addresses the request, I want to give an opportunity for the applicant to speak to the board if they choose to do so. Anyone on the half, anyone want to speak? Okay. All right. Staff has some conditions that we'd like to address with the board, if we may. This is a situation where, in unique times like this, and given the nature of it, we want to, we want to try to make sure that we address any concerns that we may have about this. And so we've developed a few conditions that we want to address with you. The board does not have to accept these as conditions, but we would like to. In light of the fact that this is new to us, to my knowledge, this is the first ice vending machine application that we've had come before us, I don't recall any others.
I think many years ago, there may have been one out at the outpost.
This board hasn't, this board hasn't addressed that. All right, so because it's new, and this, the world associated with this is new, the staff just needs an opportunity. new, and this, the world associated with this is new, the staff just needs an opportunity to address some things. Ultimately, what we're going to ask you to do is to table consideration of this request, to give your staff additional time to address some of the conditions that we want to see. But let me walk you through some of the ones that we're thinking of right now. The ice, this would be a condition to the granting of the application. The ice machine vending unit must be substantially connected to a concrete pad and rendered immovable and capable of withstanding wind speeds of a certain mile per hour. We are suggesting that it be a substantial wind load requirement of at least 100 miles per hour. That would match, by the way, with our code requirements. We may ask for an additional wind load on these units. The icing the machine must be protected from potential vehicle impact by permanently installed steel or concrete bollards, and the bollards must be painted so as to be visible to any motors. This is going in a gas station area where you're gonna have a lot of vehicle traffic, and so, the concern...
What's a bollard?
A bollard is those stand-up posts, Jay.
Just checking.
They're posts, and they're at a certain height where the intrusion of vehicle is barred, okay? So, we would require bollards to be installed as permanently affixed, and they would have to be substantial enough to withstand, you know, potential serious impact. The ice vending machine must meet all requirements of the Americans with Disabilities Act with respect to accessibility. I believe that most of these retail units do have some measure of disability access that they meet, but we want to be sure that if it's going in a public place like this, available to the public, that it meets all of the ADA requirements that may be required. Absolutely no third-party advertising of any kind shall be permitted on or adjacent to the ice machine vending structure or any appurtenances thereto. Our concern is that as a way of capturing additional revenue, these things are gonna invariably be authorized or allowed to be wrapped with some third-party advertising on them.
I mean, I couldn't put my political...
Well, you know, political speech, Steve is probably gonna get around this regardless. Nonetheless, we would say that no third-party advertising is the rule, okay? And so, we're just kind of anticipating some problems out there. We also appreciate the fact that these are gonna go in a highly visible location, and so, we are concerned, I think rightfully so, that these things could turn into ice oars. They could turn into things that are garish, would be the word for it. Some of the research that I've already done on these shows that they are designed, by design, to be eye-catching, and so, you see garish colors, you see signage that is over the top. Just the whole structure is wrapped or painted in some type of visibility that says, "Hey, here I am, come get some ice here," and that causes some concern from us from an aesthetic standpoint, especially at a highly visible location like this. And so, we would like to see some restrictions on the type of signage that would be authorized. I mentioned no third-party advertising. That's an important consideration, but we also would like to introduce some conditions on what the unit itself is able to display as it relates to promoting the sale of product. And so, we would, we would want the board, and we're not comfortable yet telling you what we think exactly. We want to study it more, but we think what we're gonna say is we want it to be reduced in size and scale on the unit itself to allow for a better aesthetic view.
How do we know what size it is? If we're gonna, you said, do we know what size that they're asking for?
Well, I don't know if we've got, we've got some...
We've got a picture.
You don't want to go in it. Of course, the outpost, 16 feet.
Oh, I've never, I've never seen one.
Oh, yeah. They're about 16 feet by eight, maybe?
The unit itself, though, but he's talking about the ladder.
While we're in this discussion, are you through on your list?
No, sir. I've got a couple of more I want to mention to you that I think are important. Yep. The ice vending machine, what we would provide, especially in the current environment that we in, the ice vending machine must automatically bag the ice, so that when, what it gets dispensed is actually a bag, a plastic bag that is encased.
Well, they have two options.
Bulk or a bag.
Yep. You can go up there with your cooler, punch the button, and the ice actually dumps into your cooler, okay? That's one option, and I'm not familiar enough to know whether this is a two-option machine or not. What we are suggesting is if you're gonna put one in here, the condition is it comes out in a bag.
Or can you have two options?
Why would you, why just a bag?
In the current environment, it promotes health considerations when it's coming out in a bag versus when it comes out in bulk of ice, right? That's just, this is just one of the conditions that we were thinking through that we want to continue to think through.
You just put your money in, it's gonna bring out so much ice if you're holding a cooler, wouldn't it?
Go ahead with your other one.
Yep.
I thought that was...
The unit must be well-lit. The area around the unit must be kept clean of all garbage or debris, and this would be a big one in our opinion, given the fact that these are somewhat new. The conditional use permit shall expire one year from the date of issuance unless the applicant files a request for renewal of that. That gives the board the opportunity to revisit the issue of the condition on an annual basis, so that if it's clear that it's being kept clean, it's being kept monitored, it's being kept well-lit, it's not being abused from the standpoint of advertising to third parties, all of the, as long as the conditions are being met, then the use can continue, but it gives the board the opportunity to revisit the issue, at least on an annual basis. And then, we would suggest to you that until the governor's executive order has been lifted as it relates to the virus situation, we would require that the applicant keep all of the contact surfaces of the unit cleaned on a daily basis. So, those would be our proposed conditions now, but we would ask that you table consideration of this today until such time as we have an opportunity to revisit this with you at a later date.
I would rather not require them to put it in a bag, because half your people gonna show up with the cooler, and those bags are gonna go on the ground. They're gonna rip it, dump it in that cooler, and throw a bag on the back.
I'll give you my two cents of it. I'm just not for, just, the main restriction I wanted on the placement of this ice machine was that we keep it clean, right, the area around it, and the visible sides around it, it's trash picked up, there's not even empty Styrofoam coolers dumped over and knocked over and left on the side of the road. I don't want it to be a nuisance visual issue, and I think we discussed that with these two gentlemen a week, two ago, a month ago, whenever it was they came in. So, I understand the things you're talking about as far as not being able to blow it over, and we want it on concrete. I'd like to have it on concrete. I agree with that side of it.
It's gonna be wet, dripped and all that.
I agree with that, but I don't want to get, personally, I'm not big in all the government restrictions on things. I'm just not. I just, I feel that we have the nuisance issues that are there, and if we've got a problem, I may be for the mindset of, you know, every year, we come in and re-up the license, be sure it's working the way we should, but to place a lot of restrictions on these people doing these things, I'm not a fan of personally. So, my take is, is, and we'll let the hearing go on as it goes through, but I'm for just placing the restrictions on these guys and the conditions on these guys to be sure that the area is clean, it's kept up properly, and it works on that point. Then after the year comes back, if we've got problems with it's not working the way we should, then we don't renew the permit at that point. It's not the way it needs to be. That's my take on it, and all the things you called out are good, valid points on that. I'm just not a big fan in Big Brother, micromanaging small business. I want to be sure the businesses are ran properly. I want to be sure that they're a good, safe, clean area and a good addition to the area. I don't want to lower values on having ice machines that are out there, but if it's clean and kept up the way it should be, I'm good.
What about the signage for it?
Yeah, I mean...
The sign that comes on it is good enough.
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of how that's advertised right there. I wouldn't want you to market anybody else's business on it. Advertise your business on it and let that be that. So, that's, as seen in that description right there, that picture. And I'm sure there's certain things you still have to do to anchor. I don't know what the wind restrictions would be for blowing those things over.
It's gonna have hurricane tie-downs on it.
All right, so it's got those things in place. I don't, I don't know what the descriptions are, but...
A tie-down?
Yeah, if they're hanging into the concrete. It's part of the installation.
Okay.
It's gonna be on slab, it's gonna be on concrete slab.
If I may, if we're gonna hear from the applicant, the applicant needs to come forward, say who he is, address.
Come on up.
That's just, that's just my take on it.
Come on up.
Yeah.
Are y'all planning on installing exactly one of these?
Yes, it should, it's gonna look like that. So, the sign should be, I can get dimensions if y'all would like that, but there's 100% not gonna be a different...
Tell us your, just first off.
Yeah, I'm Kyle Septon, S&amp;B Real Estate, living in Brandon.
Address?
1207 Woodlands Green Drive, Brandon 39047.
So, I've seen, like, there's one in Pearl that actually is bricked, but then there's some others. I've stopped at, going down to the coast, and one looked just like this. It was white, and, yeah, I mean, but the one thing, the couple I've been around, I think I mentioned you guys came before, you know, they had a dumpster out there, and then when it was gone, everybody just left their bags everywhere and just got trashed. So, do you have a commitment with the landowner to rent a dumpster, pay part of his, or what's your plans to deal with garbage?
Yeah, we're gonna have, I mean, whatever we need out there, garbage cans, whatever, for people to put their trash directly in. Like I said, I live a mile down the road. A partner, Jesse, lives a mile the other way. He'll be by there every day. We've got a good relationship with the gas station owner too, so they're gonna be looking to pick it up whenever we're not there. I mean, the last thing we want is for it to look trashy. I promise that we care about this much more than y'all do.
Yeah.
And so, I'm not, I mean, if it was me, I'm not gonna keep going somewhere that's, you know, trashy and has stuff around it. So, we're gonna keep it looking very good, and we'll be by there at least every day, no doubt. I mean, it's right down the road from me.
Slade, do you see, Slade, do you see any other major things on your list of stuff that...
I'll walk through them one more time, just to make sure that we're clear about what conditions we think we feel strongly about and what we don't, we're not concerned about. Do you have any other questions?
I think that's the main thing. That's...
Yeah. I think the one, the one thing I don't know if I mentioned, we obviously have the slab. There's certain specs that the machines have to be on. We've already got a contractor looking at it, and it's gonna be, it's, like I said, hurricane-proof, and there's actually additional straps that make it even stronger for the, for the wind.
And then installing of the, I would think you'd want that anyway, installing some of those concrete pipes or metal pipes on the corners to keep it from getting damaged.
Right. It's gonna be, it's gonna be a little bit off the main drag in the grass area, but, I mean, for sure, we're gonna have it where it's, nobody can run into it, whether it be those...
That's why running into it is loss.
That's what I said. I would give them to.
But, I mean, it's not a great thing, or while we would require it.
How many do we have in Rankin County right now? Do you know?
I don't know. Two.
Yeah, I think we're a couple, but I can't think of, I mean, two or three that I'm saying.
But I've been out loud.
We've got one down beneath us.
In C3?
Yeah, C3.
We probably would allow it in C3.
So, here's the distinction. You can't just say which ones are out there and what we do with those, because we outright, I think we think we outright allow them in C3. This is C2, it's a different, all the way. If this was C3, more than likely, we didn't be thinking about this. It'd be up to the property owners to figure out the rest of the consideration. We may want to begin looking at whether or not we're gonna outright allow these things in C3, okay? We might want to, but right now, today, we're here on a C2 request, and so, you have the unfettered discretion to provide for conditions before you allow this use, all right? So, unless you have any more questions of this gentleman.
I think I'm good. I may, I may get you back up here before we get done.
Okay.
All right. So, let me walk back over these one more time. It sounds like the issue of the wind load, the affixing of this unit to the location is addressed. It's attached physically to a concrete pad, and it will withstand wind loads of hurricane force, okay? So, that appears to be addressed, although I would, again, suggest that we make that a condition. We just simply identify, because we are anticipating, hello, lady in the back, we are anticipating more and more requests for the, for the installation of these units around the county, this is your opportunity to essentially establish a pattern that can then be communicated to anyone beforehand, before they decide to spend money on an application. This is our opportunity to sort of drive home how the board feels about these and what we are going to require ahead of time. And so, if we're gonna address these things, now is the time to address them whole cloth, all right? And so, the wind load requirement, the concrete pad installation requirement rendered immovable, that appears to have been addressed, protected from potential vehicle impact. Frankly, Jared, to your question about, you know, if it's off, if it's outside of the traffic pattern, then what do we care if somebody backs into it? The issue is one of protecting the individuals who are using it in the event that a vehicle backs in. I don't want anybody pinned against this thing.
But if you're gonna do that, Craig, really, you're gonna have to have a whole barrier of fence. You can't just, you have to identify how many, because if you put one each corner, that's not gonna stop anybody backing into somebody.
Right.
You'd have to have them at six-foot increments.
So, what we, what we have required, rather than saying specifics, Jared, as to height and span, a distance between bollards, what we say is protected from potential vehicle impact. It's up to the, it's up to your staff, and it'll be up to the unit owner to provide that amount of protection that would prevent vehicle impact, given in an individual situation, right? So, maybe just on two sides is enough, because on the rear, it's up against the property line or a fence, and there's no vehicle movement back there.
Depends on where it's located.
Yeah, so, as long as you've got an appropriate amount of distance between the bollards that prevents vehicle intrusion, you've gotten there. I think the ADA requirement, if we don't address it, it's gonna be addressed for us. That is, somebody who is handicapped who can't access this facility is gonna raise the issue. Is that our problem? It could be, if we don't address it on the front end, by telling them, "Make it ADA accessible." Okay? So, I think it's just a good move on their part.
What does that mean? What does that, what does that mean?
It means that someone in a wheelchair can actually access this unit, and...
So, it just needs to be concrete, leveled concrete?
Yes, they're gonna need a ramp. They're gonna need accessibility from the standpoint, I don't want it on a curb, Jay, that somebody in a wheelchair can't get to it.
Okay.
So, if...
Or one level.
Yeah, it needs to be on the same level, grade level. Yes, absolutely. And so, they just need to make it accessible. I think that's good business regardless.
They usually put on an elevated slab.
Sir?
They usually on a elevated, you talking about make the slab flush with the ground?
No, sir. No, sir. I'm just saying, find a way to make it accessible, Jared. Yeah, so it may be a ramp, it may be some sort of adaptation of the curb.
Curve forward from the machine.
Yes.
Yeah, right.
Okay? So, ADA accessibility seems to be in play here. No third-party advertising. We feel strongly about that. This is going to be turned into an advertising sign board, and so, we want to put a stop to that right now and just make sure that it's clear, Rankin County, you're not gonna use those as advertising. You're gonna advertise your service, and that's it, okay? It sounds like the board's somewhat ambivalent about the actual signage for the unit itself. If it comes wrapped, it's just, that's just the way that it is. We would prefer to see a situation where if there is discretion...
I'd like for it to be brick.
Yeah, okay?
I know that adds another cost, but those buildings that we've let go in out there have all been brick.
Okay. Steve, that's, that's even beyond what we were...
Well, the one in Pearl is brick.
Yeah, that whole other deal. I guess it depends on the location.
I mean, if y'all aren't...
That'd be, that'd be a condition.
They don't threaten you.
It depends on where it is.
Yeah, they don't.
Okay, that's not one that we thought about. If the board feels strongly that we need to, we need to anticipate that as a condition, then we're not prepared today.
Here's my only thing on the brick deal. If, for some reason, two years down the line, they decide to take it out of there, we've got an abandoned brick thing. I mean, that kind of limits the ability to close shop and go out of there.
We got an ice...
I'm not just stuck on it. It's just, you know, we have made those other buildings out there brick, but I'm, I can go either way.
Okay. We'll put that on hold for the moment.
Yeah.
So, so we'll just go with no real discussion item as far as a condition as it relates to the actual signage for the unit. What we would propose, what we would propose is that your staff be authorized, as a condition, to approve the way that the unit is going to look. That is, if it's clear that it's aesthetically in keeping with where it's going, that the staff be authorized in to permit it, okay? That would be a condition. The unit needs... Uh, the unit needs to be well lit, um, that, I, I, we think that that goes without saying, uh, that as the facility is lit, so this unit needs to be lit, and that's to provide for safety for the people that are using it, uh, and for visibility if there is an incident that needs to be captured, okay? So that seems like a reasonable condition. Uh, the next item, which is that the unit has to be kept clean and free of debris or garbage, uh, it's just gotta. Uh, and, and we wanna set a high bar here, uh, that we don't, we don't really know about these things now, but what we can say for sure is, if they create garbage or debris, they gotta go, okay? Uh, and then, uh, we would feel strongly about giving your staff and you guys, this board, an opportunity to revisit the issue of the permit on an annual basis, and we would ask you to please implement as a condition for any of these units, that our permits will be on an annual basis, and they have to request a renewal. Uh, we would, we would ask you, uh, at this time, we would ask you to consider tabling this request, again, to give us an opportunity to get really comfortable with all of the conditions. Uh, this also gives us an opportunity to learn more about them before the board makes a decision. And so we're just asking for a brief respite, maybe until the third, uh, possibly till the eighth, uh, to revisit this, uh, with you, and make sure we've covered all of the waterfront on these.
Alright, I, I got one question, if I can jump in for two seconds, I just wanna ask, uh, ask them one more question if I can. Yeah, that'd be good, so just the, we just have about seven or eight things right there, and I'm gonna go over them with you again. You've taken care of the wind load and stuff on there, the concrete pad, the vehicle protection side, any type of ADA accessibility you need to have on that. No third party advertising, we talked about the cleanliness of it, uh, our staff would go out and do some visual approvals of the site and location, the lighting of it all, uh, and then the one year basis on the renewal permit, any of those disclaimers for you guys?
Um, can you explain the one year renewal?
Yeah, so basically, at that point, after a year, you would just come back to us, reapply again, and if everything's going good, the board will be able to approve it for the next year, it's only basically a renewal for each year.
Okay, that's, I mean, that makes sense, that, so as long as we follow these things and keep it on, that should be fun.
For that, if we have problems with something going on, we notify you, you get it corrected, as we're not just gonna sneak up and say, oh, by the way, here's a trash can turned over.
Right.
So we'll let you know as it goes on, but.
Right.
Any of those things?
That's the only, and this might be a dumb question, but what if, what if there's a new board in five years?
Very well, I think it's gonna be a new board.
Right, so what about this?
I'm telling you, there's gonna be a new board.
What if somebody done like that, they have ice machine then, are they gonna get rid of our permit?
I mean, it's, it's possible, there's three votes up here to do anything that the board wishes to do, so is that possible, sure? But, um, if that's one of your continual stuff and it's going on good, then.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's, we, we plan on this being a great thing for us, for y'all, I mean, that, look, this is a great benefit with the machine, um, this should be a good benefit for everybody to use it, we're investing a lot in this, and a lot of time, energy, and money, so, um, that's a big thing on our part. We don't wanna do all this.
Personally, I don't really see a need in doing a one year reup, because we have conditions.
Okay.
If they don't meet conditions, we can shut it down, so I don't really see a need in that, plus, they're gonna have a substantial investment, you know, they're gonna put out, and I know, I wouldn't want to be spending that much money knowing that possibly in a year, some whim, somebody said, you don't want it anymore, you know?
I'm, I'm okay with that.
I, I don't think we do that to anybody else.
And, and you're right, with the other provisions that are in there, so I'm, I'm good on that.
I've never seen us do that to anybody else.
I mean, is there other things that you say?
Um, and this machine would be ice, there's an option to do water too, but we're not gonna have that, so it'd be an ice, you get a twenty pound bulk bag, I mean, yeah, twenty pound bag, you can do the, the bulk option, where it goes directly into the, uh, cooler.
No dry ice? No dry ice?
Right, there's both options on the, uh, on the one.
Darn.
Hey, maybe down the road, there's a need, we can make it happen.
Yeah, I use it about twice a year, dry ice, freeze Brandon.
What, uh, what would allow for the one year revisit, Jay, is situations where, um, it's, it's unclear whether there's been different compliance with the, um, being able to have that as an option, uh, gives, in my opinion, much better compliance from the applicant, knowing that it's gonna be revisited.
Yeah.
Uh, we find that there's much better compliance with our conditions.
Well, how do we deal with other conditional uses, though?
We, we actually have had, uh, sh- short fuses on conditions in the past in other situations, not directly related to this. I'll, I would be frank with you, I, I see this, uh, as a potential, um, tr- troublesome issue for us with just the sheer number of these things.
Yeah.
Uh, and the lack of, um, the, the lack of attention that I'm, that I'm concerned they're going to get from, not necessarily this applicant, I'm looking at the future.
Yeah.
Uh, not all applicants will be created equal, not all will be from Rankin County, not all will be concerned about Rankin County.
True, true.
And what I'm concerned about is that we say on the front end, with the very first one that we've had to face, these are the minimum conditions that you can count on seeing, okay? And, and I really just want the board to present a strong unified approach to this, that we are going to require you to do what you say. And if you come in here and trash up our community, your, uh, ability to do this kind of business is gone, alright? I just really wanna set a bright line, uh, and, and having that one year short fuse will put the board in a much better position to get compliance, if Renee calls and says, this thing, you got bags, you got ice bags all over the place.
Yeah.
You gotta do something, uh, I want them to know that what's on the line there is the renewal of that permit.
Yeah, well, there was one thing I didn't see listed or hear listed, I think we need to either have a, you know, a dumpster or an agreement with the landowner that you have a share, you know, the use of their facility. You know, I don't think we just need to leave it as.
It's a long way from, have to walk and throw their trash.
Or a dumpster, you know, just have a little small dumpster right near the side of it, 'cause otherwise, it's gonna be left there.
And just put open can, it's still gonna blow out.
There's gotta be some way to dispose of it, because even, like Steve said, there'll be, you only got two options on these things, you either go with a smaller bag, or you go with the cooler option, you get a ten or twenty pound, and so, if you go ten pound, it's one way and it's a bag only. And so, a lot of people are gonna dump it in their cooler right there, and you gotta have a bag to deal with.
You're right.
So there needs to be some way of dealing with that on sites.
What's your, what was y'all's plans initially, just bagged ice?
Uh, in the cooler, I mean, in the machine?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's, like I said, you can get a twenty pound bag of ice, or you can get the bulk ice option.
I mean, is that the type of machine you're doing bulk or bag?
That's right, both of those are in the same, you can.
Yeah, most of them have a little chute that shoots out of.
That's right, sure, either one's got the same option, um, yeah, so right where the machine is, there's a dumpster probably fifteen, twenty feet away from it, uh, that the, that the gas station uses, will have access to that, uh, but, I mean, we want it to look nice, and so we're gonna have, um, some kind of a nice, um, you know, garbage can that, whether it be wrapped in wood or whatever, that's gonna be not movable, it'll stay there that we can switch out.
Yeah, you see where we're coming from, we're trying to look down the road after you guys sell this one, and sell it to somebody else, we, we just need to make sure it's taken care of five years from now.
Yeah, I definitely understand that, um, whatever things y'all put in place with aspects of it, I mean, we're gonna keep up. Like I said, this is more important to us than it is for y'all, and, um, it's gonna look good, for sure. Yeah.
So thi- this issue of the, the access to the dumpster and, and how we're going to physically locate the garbage, those are all issues, by the way, that we, that the staff has just simply not had an opportunity to really think through and make sure that we give you guys good guidance. We believe that if you will give us a little bit of time to address these, that we will have a list of conditions that we can recommend to you guys, has covered all of the considerations. We're not a place right now, uh, to give you guys the, the full itemized list of conditions. We would really appreciate an opportunity to visit those conditions and to come back for you at the earliest convenience that y'all insist on, and, and get these conditions in front of you. So if you will favor us with a tabling of this consideration until a later hearing date, we would appreciate it.
Yeah, I just don't wanna put it out a long time, I mean, I.
The third, or eight?
I mean, yeah, we, we've put it off this long now, so.
Yeah. What do you wanna do?
Your, your next meeting is on the third, uh, that, that would be plenty of time for us to be able to get our heads around these conditions, and so that would be, that would, that would be a perfect opportunity.
Touches me and you, what do you wanna do?
Me? I don't know, either way, um, if they need a little more time, we can play, I guess.
Craig, um, it would be good if they would submit their foundation detail to us, those specifications, so we can see about the wind speed, we could be doing all those things before it's set, if they will provide that to us.
Alright.
And cover that, 'cause we haven't gotten any details on that.
Or you wanna do it now?
I mean, I'd rather do it now, but, um, I don't wanna, I don't wanna go against, uh, Slade's guidance, I'd get outside of his.
Well, you, you guys know I'll do anything y'all wanna do, I'm, we're gonna, we're gonna accommodate you, uh, i- it would just be a cause of what all is on the line here for the future, we feel strongly that, that we need to make sure we get it right.
Well, and each one of them, even in the future, we still have to come back for us for.
Yes, sir.
An, an entire different set of rules, right?
That's right.
Because every one of them's in the, if everyone's coming back in for us, everyone's got different conditions, so I guess that's kinda my thing, I'm good with these conditions in, in this area, at this exact location, um, but you may have an area that's different, or somewhere else that may be different, because every single one of them, just because we have a uniform system set up for here, if he goes along with the, uh, conditions that I listed out right here, and I agree with Mr. Renee, the, the layout of a, the concrete pad, stuff like that, to be sure it's anchored the proper way, and you guys are proving on that point, I'm good with that. I agree, we need to have a, a process, you're a hundred percent right, this, this opens up a large can for future uses.
Yes.
Of these type of items, but each one of them would be individually addressed based on the location.
If it's C two.
If it's C two, if it's C three, we don't have anything other than saying, you know.
At the moment, it doesn't appear that we have the ability to provide for, in my opinion, adequate regulation of these uses in a C three. And per- personally, I don't, at the, at the moment, I don't see a reason for us to have a distinction, I think we ought to introduce for purposes of C three, some sort of condition, and so we wanna look at that from a zoning standpoint, okay? The only other condition, Daniel, that I can think of that hasn't been addressed, that I would like to see the board at least consider, is that if there is in fact, uh, at some point, a transfer of ownership of the unit or the leasehold, that the board has an opportunity to know who is going to be the secondary owner, alright? So what we would say is that the condition would be this, that the applicant is granted an exclusive permit, that it's not transferable, and that would provide the board with an opportunity then to, uh, in, in essence, to know who the secondary user will be, and, and give you guys an opportunity to have an audience with them, so that it can be clear that these are what the conditions are, and th- these are the expectations.
We want it to look good, we want the area clean, we want all that taken care of the right way, so.
And we have these gentlemen here who have heard that and have indicated verbally that they intend to follow that. My issue would be, if there's a secondary owner, that this board get an opportunity to, to hear that same thing from them, okay?
So I'm gonna list out these conditions right here, and I'm getting outside of Slade, this is my shock collar, probably not working good. I'm gonna list, I'm gonna list out these conditions right here, just to be sure you guys are good with this thing. Uh, the wind load and everything, uh, acceptable to the ratings of it, Mr. Renee's office will, will oversee that, just to be sure everything's compliant in the, the building, or the ice shed secured to the location on concrete. Um, we got some kind of vehicle impact protection, and Ms. Renee's office will oversee, to be sure we got some kind, type of vehicle protection, uh, some, some type of impact. Also, we adjust any, uh, address any type of ADA requirement that's out there, and make it accessible to handicap, uh, parties that may be wanting to use it. No third party advertising, the cleanliness of it, we've got the dumpster, and you said it's been fifteen, twenty-five feet, let's just say a dumpster within twenty-five feet of the location, you think that's in that proximity, I don't even wanna say twenty-five feet, in, in an approximate location to be used, alright, I'm not gonna put a distance on it. Um, uh, Mr. Renee's office still goes back, visually approves everything, be sure it cosmetically fits into the confines of that area where it's falling into, the area is well lighted, I know that's a, a good situation there, in that service station that's there now. Um, I'm gonna put in there the one year renewal basis on there, and that's just basically come back, everything's running good, it comes back, and then also, it'll grant exclusive, uh, access to you guys, if y'all sell it or change parties, then they come back to us and reapply for additional conditions, so, are y'all good with those there?
Yeah.
Okay, so, that's my motion, to make that a little approval.
Alright, motion by Daniel to approve this conditional use, seconded by Jared, any other discussion? So you didn't put anything about the waste, garbage?
Yeah, yeah, the cleanliness in the dumpster that's there.
Hi.
Obviously.
I wasn't paying attention.
Sorry about that.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, ayes have it.
Alright, we're good. Gentlemen, that's all I've got on the public hearings.
Hey, alright, thank y'all for coming. Before we move on, we have the Heinz, President Heinz here with us, we told him to come, asked him to be here at eleven. Can we go ahead and have them come up and introduce themselves to us, and, uh, so that they don't have to keep waiting?
I know if I own a gas station, I'd be putting them in myself, and if I own a gas station, I'd do it myself.
What's the best one?
They're a heck of a deal considering you paid, you paid a dollar seventy-five for twenty pounds, you, you paid, you know, over two for a ten pound bag at, uh, at the gas station. Crazy.
Yeah, yeah.
They didn't bring people, I thought they were, they didn't get the real meaning of what this means.
Come on up, fellas, ladies, come on up, hey, Steve? We didn't wanna keep y'all waiting out there any longer.
That's alright, that's alright, we preset the opportunity to come and talk to you.
You betcha.
Thank you.
Well, it's good to see you again.
Absolutely, nice to meet all of you, uh, I'm Steve Vasek for the ones I have not met, new president of Heinz Community College. I am now a resident of Rankin County, live here in Brandon, so that's exciting. Um, just, uh, very pleased to have this opportunity to come with you, I don't really have anything specific, um, just really kinda introduce myself, say thank you for your support that we've had in the past, we know that obviously that this year, because of all the impacts we had with COVID and our economy sort of taking a little bit of a downturn for a while there, we're all trying to figure out what we do moving forward, but, uh, we appreciate your support, as it has been in the past, and I hope we continue that kind of a working relationship. Had an opportunity to look at some of our numbers, and obviously, uh, I think the impact that Heinz Community College has on Rankin County is, is, um, important, so we wanna continue that relationship.
I, I'd like to say one thing.
Alright.
Uh, again, I, I appreciate you coming in and talking to us, I'm gonna share one thing with you that I probably should talk to you another time about, but I'd like to just plant it for, uh, thought in your mind, just to think about on, on, uh, on a term for our first responders in Rankin County. Obviously, the county does our best to assist you guys in, in some funding and some money in, in different areas, but one of the things I'd like for you to look into is our first responders in Rankin County, they go to certain classes there at Heinz Community College, and some of those classes that they go to, one of them's an EMT school that's there, uh, that they go to, to, uh, good work at the fire departments and things like that. I'd like for you to look into a deal to where if we had Rankin County responders, first responders in Rankin County, whether it's a volunteer fireman, whether it's a paid fire department, uh, whether it was a sheriff's office, if they were a, uh, employee of Rankin County, and they wanted to go get their emergency medical training through Heinz Community College, that we had some discount or some, uh, pat on the back type gesture to Heinz, from Heinz Community College, to our responders from Rankin County, to be able to get that training at a discounted cost. I, I know we have a large need for that, uh, the, the county has a large need for that, our, our citizens have a large need for that, but, uh, the first responder training that's done there at Heinz Community College, uh, I, I'd definitely like to see a little break on those type of things. So if it's something maybe you could just look into, let it just fester for a little while in your mind, thinking maybe some options we could have. I know we have fire departments in our cities and in our counties that, uh, need this type of training a lot, and we wanna be sure we get that training of those people as much as possible, so, uh, I know they spend a lot of money, they can't afford to send a lot of their guys to EMT school and things like that, eighty percent of these calls, these guys are running their medical. Heinz Community College has a phenomenal, phenomenal program for the EMT side of it, as well as the nursing side of that. But if we had some type of assistance given to our cities and our counties and our volunteer firemen, to be able to get this type of medical training through these facilities, that would sure make, uh, make me sleep better at night. sure make me sleep better at night. So I wanted to mention that to you on the same point. For the same point, if we have our law enforcement guys from our sheriff's office, or even our fire departments that want to pursue some type of higher education, that they may have some kind of tuition break or tuition assistance, if they're an employee of the sheriff's office or one of our city police officers that are wanting to pursue their education as far as getting some type of degree or courses through Heinz Community College. So if you could help out our first responders, that would be a wish I'd have too, to find a way to discount that cost or help eliminate that cost. A lot of these guys make just pennies on the dollar. And things we can do to help our first responders, especially having Heinz Community College here, would really make me feel good, so that'd be my.
And I certainly think that's something worth looking into. Obviously, we want to be supportive, and that's a need, that's an area we can serve. Bottom line is always cost, and we just have to look what that price point is, because frankly, right now, and I'm new, so I'm just trying to address some of that.
I know I hit you off the cuff.
That's alright.
But I want you to think about it. I don't want you to give a response today as far as anything. I want you to go back and look, if you do, if you don't mind, I'd appreciate you to look at the cost of the discounted tuition for our first responders, whether it's EMT school, or whether we got law enforcement guys wanting to get their degrees and that type of stuff. It's critical for their professional success in the long term, and that's given back to the county, so if you wouldn't mind looking at that for me.
Sure.
Thank you.
We had, you know, this time of our year where we'd go through our budget, and a couple years ago, Dr. Muse came over and asked us for some additional funding, because whenever we did the Muse building back in '08, that there was a shortfall there, and that there was some growth that Heinz was wanting to do. And so they had came and asked us for additional help. And really, I have a new board member down here, and we was kind of wanting to go over where we are with Heinz and where our plans are going forward.
And well, I.
And you may not be able to answer all that right now.
Probably not. What I can tell you is that, you know, I pulled some, this quick information for my own purposes, because obviously I didn't have all the information just yet. The one thing that I guess stood out to me a little bit is, and again, you all have been very generous, very great supporters, don't get me wrong. But the capital improvement monies that we received from the county, almost every bit of that's going just to service debt right now. There's nothing for improvements. And one thing that I guess was a little bit worrisome is that facilities, the facilities we have, many of them are really, really good, but we have some labs that need a lot of work. Still have some equipment that needs to be upgraded, some flooring issues, some ceiling issues. We've got some major structural stuff that's got to be addressed at some point in time, and there just doesn't seem to be a whole lot of money to find that yet. And again, I'm not asking for anything right now, I'm just telling you, that was my assessment when I looked at that. I think we're going to have some opportunities going forward. I don't know, I don't know what's been shared with you all, but one thing that we have done, we are leveraging some funds that we have, that we receive through our COVID money for training. We're leveraging that with a company out of Canada that's going to provide some matching funds, and we're going to have about $11 million worth of equipment to go into a new virtual reality lab that will allow us to do some training that we otherwise wouldn't have been able to do. And that's pretty exciting. I'm looking forward to being able to do that. I have not had an opportunity yet to sit down and really talk with our economic development folks, who I don't know what's on the horizon. So I would hate to tell you we're going to do this, that, or the other thing, when that would be a little bit premature for me at this point. But that'll be my next thing to look at, is what kind of programs do we need to be looking at going forward? I know the ones we have right now are very good, but there's probably some that, based on the industries that we see coming in our area, we're going to be jumping on those, so.
I know one of the questions one of the supervisors had, the millage that's generated from Rankin County, does that money stay in Rankin County?
Oh, yeah. Well, I say yes, but the reality is that any time you have an institution like ours, it's as big as ours, it's a pretty far-flung enterprise. You know, it does go into the general fund to some degree, but those monies, particularly the capital monies, that go straight into those projects. There are times when the overall college budget, based on the need of a campus, is going to supplement that campus probably more than the monies they might ordinarily have, if that makes sense. One year, you might have a greater need at the Rankin campus, and so we may actually be pulling monies from other places to supplement that. And then there are other times when we may have another campus that has specific needs, we have to actually move some monies around. But overall, the answer is yes. It's just a matter of it supports the entire mission of our institution. One thing that I am really trying to get us to at our colleges, to make sure we're leveraging all of our resources in such a way that it's serving the overall mission of Heinz Community College. Because the reality is, we need each other. We need all of our counties, we need all of our campuses to be healthy.
Mark, what's the amount we give Heinz? Not we give Heinz, that's allocated through the mills here. What's the Rankin County contribution into Heinz Community College? Do you know that number?
Four mills, I believe.
4.5.
Which is what, mathematically?
For FY '20, it was 6.811 is what I have.
Almost $7 million.
Yeah.
So how much does Heinz County contribute? A lot more? Do you know?
I don't know, I didn't pull that information.
That's my question, I didn't know how many mills they're tacked on the Heinz camp.
I don't either.
So almost $7 million that we offset.
If you're doing some construction right now at the Jackson branch, correct?
We are doing some work there, yes, some infrastructure work.
Y'all have any questions, comments?
I'd like to see our Rankin County money stay in Rankin County.
Sure.
We want to grow our campus as much as we can. We definitely want to be a great partner for Heinz.
Well, I do too.
And any opportunity we have for, you know, growth, we'd like to take advantage.
Again, I live here, I'm a citizen of Rankin County. So, I mean, yeah, I'm, I agree.
You're new here, and, but I can tell you, Rankin County's been passed over for several years now, even though we've had the top-rated elected officials in our state, but yet, when it gets time to, you know, locate an industry, we seem to be, you know, put on the back burner. And we want to position ourselves going forward to where we are going to be the next spot for the next industry to come. So, you know, that's kind of when Dr. Muse came and met with us a couple of years ago, that was what, you know, we committed to him, or we conveyed to him is what we wanted to see happen. And so I still feel that way, and I think the rest of the board does too. So anything we can do to position Rankin County, and with the help of Heinz, we want to make that happen.
And I absolutely agree with that. I mean, I want to, I want to be involved with helping us be successful business industry. And again, I think our campus, because of where we're located, I think because of what we have right now, and because I think the potential we have, we can leverage that, and we can use it to our advantage.
Yeah.
I'm hoping that we'll be involved in those conversations when those companies are looking to land here. I think that's a smart move, if we're all at the starting block together. That way, we can support you even that much more, I hope.
Deal.
And I look forward to sitting down when you talk on that first responder issue.
Sure.
Just whenever you get time to sort through it and kind of get settled in.
I'll give you one guess what industry he works in.
It's important.
Well, it makes sense.
The first responder is extremely important.
And I think no more so than the last few years, we've seen that, right?
Sure.
Yeah. No doubt. Yeah. Alright. Nice meeting you.
Well, great, thank you all very much.
Alright, Ms. Slade, sorry to disrupt our agenda, I didn't want to keep them waiting.
Thank you. Item H, I believe is where we are, we covered item G. Item H is, well, first of all, let me apologize and take responsibility for the failure of your board attorney to handle business appropriately. So item H is actually a correction or a solution, a fixing of a problem that your board attorney caused, by forgetting to make sure that you had this item on your agenda for August the 3rd, since we had told everybody that's when we were going to address it. So we're going to redo. Item H is a redo of what you've already done back in July, which was to set for a public hearing the amendment to your TIF plan with the Grants Ferry Parkway TIF project. That's all we're doing. We're going to try it again. This time, we're going to make sure, on the day we say that we're going to have a hearing, we actually have one.
Alright. That was my motion. Motion by Daniel.
Thank you.
Seconded by Steve, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have.
I take full responsibility for that oversight and failure. Item I, authorization of the board president to execute a modification to the Certain Cleaning Services Agreement. This is the Rankin County Youth Court with TCS Incorporated providing for the cleaning of the U Court facility. This original agreement was entered into by the board in 2011. There's been no adjustment to the pricing on this for low nine years now, and so they've asked for a modest increase of $200 a month, same contract, just to up the amount of monthly cleaning services fee to be paid.
Motion by Daniel.
Sorry.
Seconded by Steve, any discussion? So do we not use our inmates down there? Do they not go over there? I guess they can't, yeah. They can't?
This is the youth court side of the deal. This is unrelated to the detention facility. This is the youth court side.
Okay. Alright. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Okay, item J is a little bit of an odd deal. It was brought to my attention by one of our judges, that the seal that is used by the courts, that relates to Rankin County courts, that seal, and I'll draw your attention to our board supervisor's seal behind you, is, that is actually a different seal. This is the court seal that is utilized. It's actually emblazoned on the back wall of all of our courtrooms. I don't know about Chancery Court, I'm speaking right now of just Circuit Court. But what you're being asked to consider is a board order that authorizes the removal of the seal. Why? Because it displays the 1890 state flag on the seal, the one that the legislature has just decided is no longer going to be the state flag. Your seal is fine, this is the courtroom seals, it actually has the United States flag and the state of Mississippi flag on it. So you're just being asked to allow that to be corrected, however that needs to look, removal, relocation, replacement, covering it up, whatever, however the court wishes to account for that reality before it's brought to our attention by third parties. We want to go ahead and get on topic and address it. One idea that we had is, by the way, we could just go with the state seal and allow that to be the official seal that's displayed in the courts, because the state seal does not have either flag on it, alright? So that's an option that we have. But all you're being asked to do is to account for the fact that the ones that we have now located that are displaying the state flag that has been rescinded, that those be removed. Okay?
So who came up with this one?
Sir?
Who came up with this one?
I don't know, I don't know where that came from. That's specific to you guys.
Yeah, I got you. Yep. Alright, do I have a motion? To remove the old seal and take action to do something new?
I'd like my motion that we allow them to make a decision if they want to do it or not, but not saying that, we're telling them to do it.
I think they're asking.
You're just authorizing, you're authorizing the courts to take whatever action is necessary, Steve, that's what you're doing.
I'm really, yes, I'm not going to be the one to make that decision.
Yeah. And by the way, if there is a seal anywhere else, I think we would be wise, go ahead and say that whoever is in charge of that facility, whoever is responsible for maintaining decorum in that facility, is authorized to take whatever action is required to deal with the fact that it's displaying a state flag that has been rescinded by the legislature.
But it's not hurting my feelings like it is. It's like them decide, not us.
Okay.
We'll make it clear on the record that the board is simply authorizing others to take whatever action is required to deal with the seal that displays the 1890 state flag.
So, do I have a motion? Sounds like there's no motion, so let's move forward.
Okay. Alright, item K, discussion of and potential action regarding the request by the Circuit Court judges for modifications to the jury boxes and other modifications in two circuit courtrooms. You guys may remember at our recessed budget discussion meeting last month, I was not able to attend the recess meeting because I was over at the Circuit Courthouse meeting with the judges. We were looking at potential modifications to the circuit courtrooms. And so here's the basis for the ask, that the current circuit courtrooms have 14 jury seats that are placed within each jury box. They are situated immediately adjacent to one another. There is no spacing in any of those. Y14, in capital cases, you're required to have two alternates for every jury. So you have 12 jurors plus two alternates. Nobody in there knows who the alternates are, so they're all seated together, and there is no separation. There's no way to introduce separation, by the way, the way that it's currently situated. The request is that we be allowed to expand the jury box to provide for separation between jurors, along with the introduction of some relatively inexpensive plexiglass that would allow for physical separation of each juror in the box. Okay, kind of an encased.
Could we not just have them sit out in the audience?
Yeah, so the issue with having them sit out in the audience is that they may not be able to hear the witness, they may not be able to see the exhibits being introduced, they may not be able to participate fully in the process of receiving evidence. So there's real concern about that. There also, the, where they would be seated, Jay, it also puts them in direct contact with the public, because that's the public seating area, and jurors oftentimes, especially in capital cases, are required to be sequestered, meaning that they cannot have any contact. If there's the possibility that there could be information passed to a juror during a capital case, the entire proceeding is subject to mistrial. And so you're opening up the possibility of mischief problems with how cases are conducted. So what the Circuit Court would like to do is to expand the jury box to provide this separation while retaining the ability to keep that jury sequestered under the law.
What kind of cause we're talking about to expand? I mean, what are we going to do to expand?
There's actual physical walls that have to be relocated.
Well, I'm asking, is that, would it be more, would it be cheaper to go in there and put, I know we're on the coast, some of the way they designed, some of the way their MAS's people were, they're right together, but they had the plastic that they stuffed in, something like that.
Right.
For each, was that cheaper to do it that way?
Yeah, so right now, there is literally no separation in the jury seats. The armrests are physically touching one another.
Good grief.
Yes, sir. So there's no way to get separation in there as present. And all of that seating, by the way, is bolted to the floor. You don't move it.
They got to redo the contract?
We've got. Yeah, so we've asked, Carl Franco met me over there to give us some idea on cost estimates, to do the modifications as requested, as considered. And this also, by the way, is with the benefit of having Madison County having already done this with their courtroom. They have some, and Carl has been involved in that process. And so both the judges and the architect are familiar with what we're trying to do here by comparison to what Madison County has done. You're looking at about $60,000 to $70,000 per courtroom.
Versus having them sit in the audience. Why can't we just tell the public they can't come?
Well, because you've got First Amendment issues, you've got assembly issues that come from that. What are you going to do? You going to tell the media that they can't come to a capital case? Family, victims? Those are all non-parties. The state is representing the victims in that case, and so they're not seated with the state at the table. So there are impediments, constitutional impediments, to doing anything outside of that area that's within the bar, where the bar is. All of the trial activity needs to be conducted within the confines of the bar. All of the trial activity needs to be conducted within the confines of the bar. So I don't believe that for our purposes, telling the judges, figure out a way to have jurors in the public seating area, that is not an option. I'm also going to suggest to you, however, that the estimates that I have received have come with the caveat that we're being extra careful to make sure that we include every conceivable cost. And so there's the idea that we may be shooting a little high here on our cost estimates. So what I need you guys to tell me is this. Are we going to try to help address this spacing issue for our two circuit courtrooms? And correspondingly, if so, can we get your authority to include these as additional cost items caused by our friend, the virus?
That's a hundred and twenty more thousand that we need to do?
Well, you might as well save one fifty to one sixty.
Yeah, probably one fifty.
Conservative. Everything runs over.
All right. So do we have a motion to address this item?
We don't have a lot of choice, I guess.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to address.
All right. Motion by Daniel. Second by Jared. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Pose.
Item L is a, this is basically cleanup and ratification. I let you guys know, I think it was Thursday, that we had a situation of some undermining on Lutney Road and some emergency road repair. This is basically a ratification of what happened already, which is emergency road repair at Lutney between Cooper and Henderson, and authorization of the expenditure of funds to pay for the emergency road repair of damaged culverts underneath Lutney. Authorization of the county administrator or the purchase clerk to do everything that they needed to do to affect payment of that, including but not limited to requisitions, purchase orders, or any other documents that, and amending the budgets accordingly to account for those expenses.
Here's your picture, if y'all want to look at it. Eighty-foot-long pipes. They did a great job knocking it out one night.
They did.
Yeah. So our road department, as usual, came, stepped up, took care of business.
Your district?
Yeah. Or yours, one.
What was the total cost for that replacement?
I'm not sure. It was two eight-foot pipes, eighty-foot long. Yeah. Huge.
Yeah, as we indicated to you guys, the City of Flowood has had no ability to handle culverts of that size. It just was not going to happen for those guys. So this was one where we piggybacked and helped them out. One thing that you're being asked to consider is to authorize us to provide some, or to enter into some discussion with the City of Flowood about reimbursing the county for this cost. This is inside the City of Flowood, inside their municipal boundaries. They couldn't handle it. And so, you know, if y'all want us to engage them on a conversation about reimbursing us, we're prepared to do that. But at any rate, this road had to be dealt with immediately.
I definitely think we need to do that, don't you?
Absolutely.
Heck, no. We ain't done it for nobody else. Why don't we want to get them to pay for replacing some culverts?
We hadn't?
No.
I didn't know that. I thought we always went back, we went into the city on some big stuff. We didn't.
No, we put five hundred thousand in the bridge, right down the road.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
All right. Well, if we didn't have anything going back to them for those costs, we just do it. I got you.
Let me say, since I've been here, we haven't.
The option is available. The option's available if you choose to accept it.
All right.
We don't know what it costs.
We don't even know what it costs.
Yes, thing is, if you know what it costs.
Well, if it's five million dollars, you won't have to do it.
They could have got hemp field construction and put it in.
It wouldn't have got done Friday night, or whatever, and they did it.
All right. So I have a motion to ratify us repairing the bridge, or culverts. Motion by Steve. Second by Daniel. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
I might have to get a total cost of it, wouldn't you?
Yeah, sure. What's the cost, Mike? You come up with the cost?
Oh, you do?
Oh, he already knows.
A little late? You a little late on that one?
No, it ain't.
Take it.
No, I can come up with your cost.
Oh, I thought you said you had one.
No, but I mean, you're probably down to somewhere around seventy thousand or so. I may not go over to about ten thousand a piece.
They were long, too. Eighty feet.
Four of them.
Massive.
Yeah.
Four?
It was huge. I hadn't seen any of that long before.
I get you a detail, I just haven't got all the figures together. We just got them up this morning.
How do you haul them eighty-foot long?
They were pieces together. Y'all did a great job.
Yeah, absolutely.
What do you, what kind of action you need?
A motion, second.
Just ratify and approve.
We did it. We already did it.
Oh, did we? Okay. I've got one short item in executive that I need to address for you guys.
All right. Come on, Ms. Law.
Thank you. The first item I have is authority to advertise notice of a public hearing on the proposed budget and a proposed tax levy for the upcoming fiscal year 2021 to be held Rankin County September the eighth, 2020, at nine AM.
Motion approved.
Motion by Jared.
Second.
Second by Steve. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Ayes, ahs.
Next item is authority to publish notice of intent to levy tax for Rankin, first economic development authority.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Steve. Second by Brad. Any discussion?
Yeah, tell me about that again. Just expand on it for me.
It's every year, they have their own millage.
Yes, every year we do.
It was the law that they, the way that it was created. Craig, can you explain a lot better to me?
No. I thought Jay handled it. There's a separate statute that requires the board to separately indicate notice of intent to levy for an economic development authority.
We just had to set that number, right?
The, I don't think the number's changing. Yeah. So this is just to publish the notice of intent. That's all you're doing. Saying we're going to put it in the paper, and if anybody has an objection to that particular levy, they can come and explain it to you guys on the eighth.
I guess the Rankin first discussion's coming up, right? Or did y'all have it the other day?
We had, they had it.
I wasn't.
Well.
Same old, same old.
Yeah, pretty much. He basically said that he was going to start, you know, doing a better job communicating with us on what's going on. They have, they have a project that they're planning on doing a build.
Two hundred thousand square foot building off of Market.
Did y'all decide to go ahead and keep the same money, funding and all that kind of stuff?
Yeah, we didn't. We hadn't discussed anything as far as the cut, cutting, overage. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, we hadn't discussed.
Had discussed it yet? Or not going to discuss?
I'm sure we will.
We will, yeah, yeah, I get it. Today, right?
Right.
I got you.
All you're doing is complying with the law that says you're intending.
He just liked to discuss it, I think is what he's trying to say.
Whenever it comes up.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Ayes, ahs.
Next item is authority to sign the Order of Real and Personal Property Assessment Roles for 2020.
Motion approved.
Motion by Jared. Second by Brad. Any discussion?
Yeah, so just explain to me again what that is. I understand totally what that is.
This is our assessment of our real, that John and them have done. This is the total assessment that we will, yes, we will be signing off on that is completed and.
Signing off defines it.
That sets the assessed values of the properties in Rankin County as determined by the assessor. That gets submitted to the Department of Revenue for their approval. Once they approve that as being quote "equalized," it comes back to us, that's usually in the October timeframe, and you will finally approve the role in November.
So what does this do here?
This authorizes us to send it to DOR as an equalized, compliant with state law role.
That was one last year, they sent it back, wasn't it? For two load. Was it last year, year four? I think it was last year. I don't know about that.
Yeah, okay. All right. Yeah. Right.
So when we sign off on this, we're saying what? Do we validate what he's done?
Yeah, we're saying, hey, DOR, we believe that these are, this is, this constitutes a compliant role that complies with state law with respect to assessment. We believe that this complies. Do you find that it's equalized? That is, that all property owners are being treated equally? That's what they're reviewing.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Ayes, ahs.
Next item is authority to pay the county share of the adjusted 2019 PERS due on Constable Robert Hancock in the amount of four thousand ninety dollars and thirty-two cents.
Why don't they all just come together?
Really?
Their letters just, depending on when they file their letters, just come at different times.
Okay. Motion by Daniel.
Second.
Second by Jared. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Ayes, ahs.
I have one item under additional business to add. And this would be, I received a bill from Educational Interiors. This is for a storage fee associated with the furniture for the new courthouse, three thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars. And what I need is for you to allow the attorney to check that contract and see if that is an allowable charge, like we had to do with.
How much did we pay them?
We didn't pay them anything because the contract disallowed it. So we did not pay them anything for storage. We're not sure how this contract is written. If it is an allowable charge, we will pay this invoice. If not, we cannot.
All right. Is this Chris Vincent's? Okay.
So I just need to add that item to have Craig be able to check it.
So you would approve payment upon the condition that.
Verifying it's allowable.